Well, good morning, everybody. We'll get this city council meeting started today, the January 18th, 2017 city council meeting. I will call it to order if you could please have your seats. Yeah, you'll never give this to me again, will you?
Good morning, sir.
Did you get that?
Good morning.
Did you get the gavel thing? Okay. Good morning, everybody. The January 18th, 2017 meeting of the city council is called to order. This meeting has been properly posted, noticed and posted in compliance with the open meeting law. These proceedings are being video recorded as well as presented live on KCLV cable channel two and are closed captioned for the hearing impaired viewers. Please note customers of CenturyLink can view this program in high definition on channel 1002. The council meeting as well as all other KCLV programming can be viewed on the internet at www.kclv.tv/live. These proceedings will rebroadcast on KCLV channel two and the web, the Wednesday of the meeting at 8:00 PM and also on Friday at 4:00 AM, Saturday at 7:00 PM, Sunday at 7:00 AM and the following Monday at 5:00 PM. This building is protected by a state-of-the-art fire detection and suppression sprinkler system. If alarms should activate during today's meeting, please evacuate using the exits at the back of the chambers out to the mezzanine. Proceed out the double doors to the terrace and down the back staircase. For anyone that has difficulty with stairs, please check with the marshal or fire official for assistance. Once outside, please assemble on the northeast corner across the street from City Hall at Lewis and First Street. Employees wearing safety vests and our city marshals will inform you when it is safe to re-enter the building. For public comment related to these items on the agenda, citizen participation and public hearing items, we have available a speaker card which you can complete and submit to the city clerk. Cards are available online in the clerk's office or at the rear of chambers. If you do not submit a card, it does not prevent you from speaking under public comment, citizens' participation or specified public hearing items. If there's anyone present today that has need for hearing impaired equipment, please see the city clerk's staff. If you're parked in the parking garage across the street, please be sure you have your parking ticket validated by security officers when exiting. We are excusing Mayor Carolyn Goodman as she is representing the city of Las Vegas and Washington DC at the mayor's conference. Before... Probably. Take notes. Before we proceed with the agenda, would everyone please rise for the invocation given by Reverend Shad Groverland, Unity of Las Vegas, and please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
So I should invite everyone to take a deep breath and relax your shoulders. Come completely present into this space, knowing that no matter what has been happening this week or this year, we leave it behind in this moment, allowing ourselves to be present, to do the work that is so important, to be in alignment with a higher good, a higher calling, something that is beyond just me, my desires, my wants, but it's about the whole, the community, the collective. And so we sit here in great gratitude, given the gift of service. We do it with pride and honor and clear mind and open heart. And for this, we gave thanks. Amen, and so it is. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Come on down here. Apparently, good morning, everyone. This is the ceremonial portion of our agenda and our first item. I'd like to invite our operations and maintenance director Jerry Walker to join us at the podium. Jerry, come on down. Give him a round of applause because Jerry does a lot of stuff for us in the city of Las Vegas. Good morning, sir. Thanks for being here. Our employees strive to be superheroes in the workplace, meeting our values of action, which stands for achievement, creativity, teamwork, integrity and ownership now. They build our community to make life better. Today, I'm proud to announce that the employee of the month is Emmanuel Windhorse. Manny, would you come on down here, please? Give him a round of applause. He's got his boots on, he's ready to go back to work. Often, our employees are making huge positive impacts in the community and our residents have no idea that the work is actually happening. That is a great thing when it comes to road projects. If a project can get done with little or no impact on our residents, that is a win-win situation. That is where Manny comes in. Manny manages the city's roadway overlay program which rehabilitates pavement so that our streets last longer and do not need major repairs. Basically Manny's teams do regular road checkups throughout the city doing preventative maintenance and quick projects that help keep our roads in tip-top shape. What Manny does is akin to getting regular checkups from the doctor to avoid large-scale issues in the future. For every dollar that the city spends on these preventative maintenance measures, three dollars are saved on future projects. This adds up fast with this program, saving the city between 15 and 20 million dollars annually. Maybe the best part is that Manny and his teams finish these projects quickly, avoiding long construction times that can cause traffic headaches in the present and also the future. Manny so proficiently administers the program that there is limited fanfare despite the major positive impact that it has. Manny, thank you and your team for all the work that you do and the service you give to the community. I'm proud to present you with this award. That one right there? Naming you Employee of the Month for January 2017. In addition to our left, that sign will be posted on, in front of City Hall on Main Street for the entire month, so you can drive by and take pictures and your family, the whole thing. You know the routine. So we want to give you a chance to say a few words, but first we want to hear from the amazing Jerry Walker. Jerry?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. It's Manny and his coworkers that make me look amazing. The arterial overlay program's been in place about 15 years. It is just an outstanding program. It keeps our roadways in the good, excellent condition section of the lifecycle curve. It does not allow them to go into deteriorated state. We do get a three-to-one rate of buyback and it is very beneficial for inconvenience considerations. Manny has been a primary individual on this program since it was implemented 15 years ago, one of two primary individuals with the other having just retired. With the fuel revenue index passage in October, November, Manny will become even more critical. These programs are so unobtrusively done, they just kind of slide below the radar. We did have a couple of problems this year. We got a late start due to circumstances outside our control in Ward 6 and Ward 2 and as both Mayor Protem and Councilman Beers can attest, we did have some concerns there. Manny worked his way through those, satisfied the citizen concerns, addressed some roundabout concerns up in Ward 2. He did a diligent job. He's just a workhorse for us. Can't speak highly enough of him. He's an outstanding employee.
Awesome. Good job. Thank you, Jerry. If you notice Manny's shirt says "Action" right on it, so he's a man of action. You want me to hold that for you? I'll hold that for you. Give us a few words.
It's a privilege and an honor to be nominated for Employee of the Month and working in the greatest city in the country is amazing. I've been here 23 years and I'll be here for many more. It's a privilege running the street rehab department and I love improving the city's roads. It helps us all. Thank you.
Good job, buddy. Thank you. Let's go over here and get a picture in front of that handsome sign. Good job, bud. I gotta tell ya, in Centennial Hills, I've seen him. You see him on the streets, honk at him and wave. His teams are awesome. They're amazing. Today's a very special day. Not only do we get to recognize the employee of the month, but we get to recognize the employee of the year. For our next item, I would like to invite our fire chief Willie McDonald up and our city manager Betsy Fretwell to join me here at the podium. Give them a round of applause. And you know it's special when you put these two together, so. This is a special award where we choose an employee of the year from the 12 Employee of the Month winners. The winner of this award is truly the best of the best. I'm proud to announce that the 2016 Employee of the Year is Las Vegas Fire and Rescue Communications Specialist Anthony Bruno. Anthony, come on down here, dog. You are the man. The fire chief would like the whole team up here. Everybody, anyone in uniform, come up and join, even if you're not in uniform but you're with the fire department, come on up here. Is this your family? Oh, bring them up. Come on up here. Is this your sister? You like that, chief? Wow, look at this great group. Anthony has been with the city since, yeah, you can jump on this side too. Anthony has been with the city... Anthony has been with the city since 2008. How you doing, man? You're a stud. You know that. And is a communications specialist in the fire alarm office. The fire alarm office serves as the 911 communication center for all fire and emergency medical calls in Clark County. It is a demanding job that Anthony and his fellow team members do very well. Earlier this year, Anthony was driving home at about 2:00 AM when he came across an accident scene on a barren stretch of US 95 northwest of town. I'm assuming that's in Centennial Hills in Ward 6. Okay, that's what I thought. He pulled over at a safe distance to watch the city fire crews who were on scene helping the victims of the accident. Anthony has dispatched these very same responders thousands of times and he wanted to take a minute to watch them in action. As crews were leaving, Anthony prepared to head home when he heard a noise coming from the desert. Anthony decided to investigate and he headed into the dark desert to see what it was. He found another vehicle flipped on its roof with a driver trapped inside. The vehicle was so far from the accident scene that it was not visible from the road. Anthony ran back to the highway where a state trooper was clearing the scene and explained that there was another victim. A trooper radioed in the information and fire crews returned and saved the victim in the desert. Anthony's dedication to the safety of the people in our community and his actions make him an excellent example for all city employees. We are proud to name him the employee of the year. We have an award we would also like to give to you, Anthony. Look at that. In addition, Anthony has received various other awards for his efforts from the city council in the city. I'm gonna pass our microphone now to our amazing city manager, Betsy Fretwell. Betsy?
Thank you, Councilman. First off, Anthony, you've just done such an incredible job. I think it's important to kind of remind everybody where this award came from. You know, I'm a big fan of our value of ownership. I think it's really important and I think your actions just show everyone what that really means, that you're willing to go above and beyond to take care of the people of the city. And you did that and you did that with style and grace and persistence and maybe at great risk for yourself. So thank you very much for doing that. The gentleman that we established this annual award based on was a gentleman named Willie Davis and he was a custodian for the city for seven years in the late part of, in the 1970s, from '73 to 1980, and then he died in 1980. And when he died, he left some corporate stock to the city of Las Vegas for us to initiate this program, to help pay for it. And so this award is given to you in his name and in honor of his son for that corporate gift that he gave. He was a, he exemplified the kind of employee that we want to have here at the city of Las Vegas and so do you. So thank you very much for Anthony, for everything you've done and for taking care of that. One gentleman out in the desert in the middle of the night that nobody knew about. Thank you very much.
Well, I am honored, very privileged to work with Anthony. My name's Willie McDonald. I'm the city's fire chief and I want to thank Mayor Protem Ross and the city council for recognizing Anthony, but I just gotta say that the dedication that Anthony shows on a day-in and day-out basis is exemplified through the influence and the positive impact he has on all the other employees that we have in the organization. Their job is so stressful. We, our dispatchers, our communications specialists received and processed over 400,000 emergencies last year. They meet people that were on their worst day of their life. They're very upset, they're very emotional, they're seeing somebody that they know that is really having some things happen to them that they need the assistance. And then the support for our crews when they go out and handle those emergencies and his interest that night, as it is every day, was just to be a better team member and to provide better service for our community. And his actions really exemplify the great person that he is and how he really has taken ownership of his job and how he has demonstrated every day that he makes life better for this community. So proud to work with you and just congratulations.
Wow, chief. Betsy, that's awesome. Anthony, it's your turn. Oh, no, no. Yeah, Councilman Cobble wants to hear the dispatcher voice. Actually, before I say a few words, introduce your family as well because I'm sure they're an integral part of who you are today. So here's the microphone.
Thank you. This is my family, my father Ralph, mother Ronnie, stepfather Robert, my real, my other family, not real family, I apologize, my other family. Not awkward. This is behind me, the fire department employees, my fellow coworkers, amazing people that I work with.
You want to be done?
I have to give Bruno a hard time because this is how good a guy is. So when you get employee of the month...
Okay, I'll talk.
Okay, wait, wait. When you get selected as employee of the month, you get to pick a place for us to take you to lunch, right? So anywhere in the city. And so Anthony picked Pizza Rock, which is great. The food is fantastic there. So we get done with lunch at Pizza Rock and I find out from the server that he's trying to pick up the bill. I'm like, dude, this is my treat. You're not buying lunch for us. You did the great work. So this is, this tells you about this guy, he's awesome. One, one thing that we thought that might put, put this in perspective is to hear Anthony's voice because Anthony had his dash cam running that night. So we've got a quick video we'd like to roll right now.
Let's watch that.
We hear you, bud. Did you tell command? Did your other officer tell the captain? Can you hear us?
Right on.
The, the video was a little bit dark, but that was Anthony running through the desert to find that individual that was trapped in the car and then running back to get ahold of NHP to make sure that we could dispatch our fire units back to that scene to take care of them. So, good job, Anthony.
You're a rock star, man. Thank you. You're an example to all of us. Thank you very much. Thank you, chief. Thanks to this amazing team too. Las Vegas Fire and Rescue, the best. So thank you very much. Give him another round of applause. All right, buddy. Yeah, let's, let's do a group photo with all the, with all the team up here.
Let's just, maybe we could just move this.
I got it. I got it, wait. I'll run you over. I do dishes, too.
All right. Thanks, everybody. Thank you for coming back.
Christine, no, Christine.
No, that's okay.
You know, Betsy, we've got 3,300 employees work for the city of Las Vegas. I mean, that's, that's setting the bar without a doubt, but Anthony, a lot of, a lot of employees are gonna try to aspire to be you. Thanks, chief. All right. For our final item, Councilman Barlow is going to recognize the positive impact of a local political group. Councilman Barlow?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. How's everyone doing this morning? Good, good. I see we have some little ones in the house. Are they being recognized, Mayor Protem? Oh, they're coming in? Okay, well, good. I don't want to spoil anyone's treat, but I do see little ones and we always like to recognize little ones when they're in the house. But I do have the honor and the privilege of saying Happy New Year to each and every one of you and to stand before you to recognize an organization who has been representing, represented here in the city of Las Vegas for 10 years now. And that's none other than the Clark County Black Caucus, which is, the founder is in the house, Ms. Yvette Williams. So Yvette, if you will please come and also the members of the Black Caucus, if you all come, please stand with us as well today as you celebrate your 10-year anniversary here in the city of Las Vegas. And you all can come and stand on my left and my right and I'll go ahead and share with everyone, good morning. Share with everyone what the Clark County Black Caucus has been up to. The Clark County Black Caucus was founded in 2007 under the leadership of Yvette Williams, a civil rights, social justice advocate. Recognizing a void in the community around policy work impacting African-Americans, she sought support to organize voices in her community. Armed with a clipboard and a signup sheet in 2007, Yvette secured over 300 signatures interested in forming a volunteer organization and chartered the Clark County Black Caucus with 60 charter members. The Clark County Black Caucus served as the community representative of the Nevada Department of Transportation Minority Pilot Program for the I-215 freeway widening project under the leadership of Assemblyman Joe Hogan. And Joe Hogan passed away and may he rest in peace, Assemblyman, right? Assemblyman Joe Hogan, absolutely. He was a wonderful, wonderful man. Their mission was to address the under-representation of African-Americans on construction jobs in Nevada. Their involvement resulted in an increase of African-Americans' employment from 1% to 5% and women's employment from 1% to 10% during this two-year period. The Clark County Black Caucus hosts the annual African-American Student Summit, serving nearly 1,000 students since 2015 in partnership with the Clark County School District, the city of Las Vegas and the White House Initiative on Education for African-Americans. They also launched the first judicial candidate forum in Clark County, now in its ninth year, and other candidates and ballot initiatives informational opportunities for Nevada voters. They've assisted over 630 first-time high school voters and nearly 500 ex-offenders with voter registration and has sponsored Clark County Black Caucus Legislative Day since 2009 in Carson City for community members. This effort of the Clark County Black Caucus helps to ensure equality and access to greater opportunities for all Americans and in particular those residents right here in the city of Las Vegas and the state of Nevada. Therefore, today, in great recognition of the Clark County Black Caucus 10th year anniversary and their efforts to improve social justice, equality and access to greater opportunities for all Americans, we, the mayor and members of the Las Vegas City Council, do hereby proudly proclaim January 18th, 2017 as Clark County Black Caucus Day in the city of Las Vegas. Let's give them a round of applause. Oh, don't get emotional on me. And so this, this recognition here is from the city of Las Vegas and also my good friend, my college advisor, my college professor, who's now Congresswoman Deana Titus, also sends congressional recognition to you as well. And I know that we have a representative here representing her today and it states, the United States Congressional, I'm sorry, United States Congresswoman Deana Titus, certificate of special congressional commendation presented to Clark County Black Caucus in recognition of 10 years of commitment, of committed service to our community with a focus on education, economic development, immigration reform, incarceration disparity, law enforcement and judiciary reforms, health care and support of faith-based organizations and with special recognition of the efforts of founding chair, Ms. Yvette Williams. And this is from our Congresswoman from the Nevada 1st District, Congresswoman Deana Titus. And so at this time, Yvette, as the founder, if you'll please share a few words, and I see you're already teared up, but congratulations to you. Share a few words with us.
So this is an emotional moment for us. We didn't know if we'd make it to 10 years. So congratulations all of you and to our board and of course to the community that's been very supportive of our efforts. We could not do this without the support of the community. We are a volunteer organization. No one is paid and everyone does it because they are passionate about this community and about the plight of African-Americans and some of the struggles and disparities that we see. It's been a privilege to work with the city of Las Vegas. Over the past 10 years, not everyone has a city like this that's willing to work with them. We currently serve on the Education Innovations Committee, which is the city of Las Vegas Education Initiative to address proficiency gaps in those that are underserved in education. And they're doing great work and it's really an honor for the Black Caucus to be part of that committee. We've also done a lot of great things like the African-American Student Summit. This last October 24th, we had almost 500 students in attendance and it grows every single year. And I tell you the changes it's making in kids' lives. We're actually going to be taking up 30 students from the black student unions this session so that they can get an experience of what it's like in the state legislature and then visit the UNR afterwards. So these are the kind of things we're doing, but we could not do it without the support of our city and without the support of other organizations that we partner with here in the community. I also wanted to mention one of the other things that, that the Black Caucus has done, which has been very instrumental in education, is that we started an initiative called Operation 32371. And that initiative, we use that as our platform to bring, bring awareness around the literacy gap for African-American students. Right now, in the state where I call it invisible under free and reduced lunch and because we weren't tracking information by race, we did not realize how big of a gap we had for African-American students, which really are the lowest proficiencies in the state of Nevada. So we know that this special subgroup really needs some special help so that they can read by three and make sure we comply with the law, that we must all read by three. And, and so we're looking forward to continuing the work with the city and with other partners of the community to make sure that all children can read by three. Thank you again, Councilman Barlow, for, for all that you do for us. This is one of our advisors and we could not have done this without you and your support. So thank you and to all of our council members, thank you, thank you.
We're gonna get a photo? Thank you, Mayor Protem.
Let's get a picture. Shane, you ready?
Thank you so much. Thank you for allowing us to come.
You bet, Yvette. Thank you. Good to see you, girl. Thanks for coming down.
Thank you.
You guys are awesome, doing great work.
Great work, thank you.
Don't stop. Don't stop what you're doing out there.
Thank you.
Okay, you bet.
We won't.
Go give 'em a hug.
Thank you too. Thank you for allowing us to come.
Thank you, Yvette. Good to see you all. Thanks for coming down. You bet. Keep up the great work. We've got a couple more items, and it doesn't matter whether you're putting asphalt down or you're saving lives in the desert or making an impact in our community. Councilwoman Tarkanian would like to recognize someone as well. Councilwoman?
Thank you. In December, we had a name on our celebration time, which is before the council meeting, and it was Alicia Georgiade. And we were going to celebrate her 101st birthday. Unfortunately, she became ill, and she passed away last week. We had to cancel, of course, the celebratory that we had for December, and we don't have the formal recognition, but today, we're giving an informal recognition of her life. And just a few words, she was born in 1915, and I will tell you, I've seen pictures of her, and she was a beautiful face, a beautiful voice, and I got to know her as a very beautiful person. She helped many individuals in this community, strong, strong Democrat, you couldn't really talk Republican with her. And she particularly helped musicians. She gave them money for scholarships. She gave them lodging. She did everything she could to help in music. This lady, at the age of 100, was wearing boots with a high heels, black leather boots up to her knee with a high heels. And I said to myself, that's a great accomplishment in itself, as any woman would know. I can't wear high heels at my age now, and I know others at 30 that can't, but she did. She had that actor's or actress's body that she could move, and she could talk. And on her 99th birthday, she did a soft shoe for us, and she also sang. And her voice was absolutely beautiful at the age of 99. So, I want to tell you, one of the things she remembered very much was that she was asked out on a date by Clark Gable. She didn't go on the date. She was very young at the time, and I think she was a little bashful, but in any case, she did have lots of friends. Telly Savalas was a close friend of her family. Every year, she'd have recognition of his birth in the RJ. So, I just want to say, for Alicia, who had as heart as big as the world, who lived in Ward 1 for decades, and who went out and helped others so that they could share her passion, I just want to say that we loved you, we still love you, and today, we are honoring this as Alicia Georgiade Day, even though it's more on an informal basis than we previously thought we would. Thank you.[775.01][775.01][applause]
Thank you, Councilwoman. That was wonderful.
That's her picture. I didn't have time to get a formal one because of everything that was happening, but that's my granddaughter with her. But you can see, that picture was taken probably six weeks ago, 101 years old, just tremendous.
Wow, that's gorgeous. That's awesome. Thank you, Councilwoman. I will say that Councilman Coffin often wears the leather boots with the high heel. I'd hope I didn't spoil anything for you.[806.01][806.01][laughing] I'm sorry, I'm just teasing him. Thank you, Councilwoman. That was great. We have some amazing people in our community, without a doubt, and we continue to do this on a regular basis in the ceremonial portion, but we also have some amazing children in this community as well. So, when I said today's a very special day, it is a very special day. We have Deborah Dahl, the principal of the Las Vegas Junior Academy, here with us today with her first and second graders, who are going to sing us a song in four languages? Five languages, okay? English, Spanish, French, Thai, and Hawaiian. Yes? You want to bring the kids up? Come on, come on up here, kids.[844.82][844.82][applause] That's it, just line up right up front here. We are the city of entertainment, right? World's best entertainment, world's most amazing children. Here, scoot down this way. Right there, right there.
Thank you for having us.
Oh, wait.
Our young people are learning that as your young people.
Thank you for having us. It's an honor to be here. Our young children are learning that they are servants of the community, and you are our community leaders and servants, and that's why we are here to say thank you to you with a small token of what, how much they know in their intelligence. But once a month, we also visit our fire department, our police department, and we're bouncing around the city, making sure we take turns, but we mainly go to the Torrey Pines Fire Department. So, these are the first and second graders, and thank you again for having us. We are, these are your future leaders, and we're honored to be here.
Awesome. All right, let us have it.
I have the joy, 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 joy down in my heart, way down in my heart, way down in my heart. I have the joy, 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 joy down in my heart, way down in my heart. You say, you'll bring the force of God and the Lord, 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 and[1146.13]
Interesting.
I have to sit next to him. I mean, at least you're four blocks away. He's my next door neighbor.
Never a dull moment down there. All right, we will resume our city council meeting after the ceremony in proportion. We are on agenda item number eight. This is public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters on the agenda for action. The amount of time any single speaker is allowed may be limited. All comments made will be cross-referenced to those specific items. If anyone submitted a speaker card or who wishes to speak under this portion of the agenda, please come to the podium and state your name for the record. This is your opportunity to address the city council that the council is not able to respond or engage in dialogue. We will set the time at one minute. Does anyone wish to speak to the city council? No one? Thank you. We will move on to agenda item number nine. These are business items for possible action. Any items that the council staff or and/or the applicant wish to be stricken, tabled, withdrawn, or held in advance to a future meeting may be brought forward and acted upon at this time. Councilwoman Tarkanian?
Yes, we have item number 11 on the consent agenda. Contract number 160237 TF for professional service contract for Ogden Avenue enhancement panels has been stricken as requested by staff.
Very well, and that is your motion?
And I move that, yes.
Okay, there's a motion to strike agenda item 11. Please vote. And please post. And that motion passes. Again, Mayor Carolyn Goodman is in Washington DC representing the city of Las Vegas at the Conference of Mayors, US Conference of Mayors, so she is excused from this meeting. We are now on to the consent agenda. No, I'm sorry, item 10. Did I miss item 10? Such a hurry. No, I got it. This is agenda item 10 for possible action to approve the final minutes by reference of the December 7, 2016 regular city council meeting. Councilwoman, do you have a motion?
Move to approve.
There's a motion to approve the minutes of the December 7 meeting. Please vote. And please post. And that motion passes. Now we will move on to the consent agenda items. Item 11 was stricken, leaving items 12 through 43 on this consent agenda. These items are considered to be routine and recommended for approval by the departments and may be enacted in one motion. Please note the following corrections for the record. Items 15 and 16 should reflect Council Ward III, Councilman Coffin, and on items 34 through 37, the staff recommendation is approval, subject to conditions. Are there any other items the council wishes to bring forward? Seeing none, Councilwoman, do you have a motion?
Move to approve. Move to approve the consent agenda.
There's a motion to approve the consent agenda. Subject to those changes and additions, please vote. Councilman Beers? And that motion passes. Thank you. And that takes us to agenda item 44. This is administrative. This is a report by the Department of Transportation regarding Project NEON, which will extend along I-15 from Sahara Avenue to the US 95 and I-15 interchange. This affects Wards 1, 3, and 5, Tarkanian Coffin and Councilman Barlow. It actually affects all of us in some event. Mr. Cervantes?
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Jorge Cervantes, Executive Director for Community Development. In the upcoming months, there's going to be some changes in traffic patterns as part of Project NEON, specifically as it pertains to US 95 between Rancho and Las Vegas Boulevard. So Dale Keller with Nevada Department of Transportation is here to give you an update on the overall project and then talk about some of those traffic pattern changes.
Wonderful, Mr. Cau, please. Wonderful to have you here to give us an update.
Thank you for the opportunity. Once again, my name is Dale Keller. I am NDOT Senior Project Manager for Project NEON. And it's been a quick 10 months since we had our groundbreaking for the state's largest transportation project in its history. And today, as Mr. Jorge Cervantes said, we'll give a kind of brief overview of the project elements, kind of talk about the progress we made the last year, discuss the 2017 traffic changes, and then kind of recap of how you can stay connected with the project. So the kind of project overview, Project NEON is a complex project, but the need for this is very simple. It's safety and mobility. NDOT with its partners with FHWA and the city of Las Vegas is investing over $900 million into the heart of Las Vegas. This is the busiest stretch of highway on the I-15 between the Sahara Interchange all the way up to Spaghetti Bowl. And it has over 300,000 vehicles a day, and with that has over 25,000 lane changes per hour. As we all know, in the AM and PM commutes, it gets congested and has three accidents per day. So what we're doing, we're helping with that safety and mobility, and actually by 2035, the traffic in this area will double. So first, we're addressing the immediate safety and mobility need first with the new I-15 Charleston interchange, the southbound I-15 ramp rating, and also adding new connections to downtown and to the medical district, helping out with that mobility and accessibility in the downtown area. But not only are we looking at the immediate need, we're also looking in the future and also looking a step ahead. That's with the inclusion of the HOV flyover structure, as well as the HOV interchange, the NEON gateway. HOV stands for high occupant vehicle or carpool lanes, and then also with this, it has a whole landscape and aesthetic project. So I invite you to take a quick little tour with me through the completed project. We'll start in the south part of the project here at the NEON gateway. This is just north of Sahara Avenue and just south of Charleston interchange. So if you and a passenger are traveling in new HOV lanes on I-15, you exit from the center of the I-15 to provide access to downtown and the medical district via Western. As we move north to the new Charleston interchange, on the left, you'll see some of the new landscape and aesthetic features incorporated with the project. And on the right side of the screen, you'll see the new Charleston and Grand Central Parkway connection. Also, you'll see the ease of accessibility to and from the I-15 from Charleston. As we're zooming in, the downtown access from Charleston is going to be re-energized with city-sponsored NEON Doom's theme. It's anchored by two very unique sculptures. First one is called the Found Font, kind of as a remnant of the Las Vegas signs. And on the north side, it's a hot dip sculpture with a steel angle finish and lighting effects. As we go over to the interchange itself, the walls will be added some decorative art panels, also mainland sculptures. And jumping on the freeway now, it's the state of the arts kind that we're implementing along the I-15 all the way down to Silverado Ranch Parkway, which is the ATM gantries. ATM stands for active traffic management, and we'll discuss this here in a second. Cruising on north and I-15 northbound, it's the keystone piece of the project with our HOV flyover structure, which connects the HOV lanes on US 95 to the express lanes on I-15. When the project is complete, we'll convert the express lanes to one HOV lane and one general-purpose lane, creating 22 continuous miles of HOV network throughout the Las Vegas Valley. Going back south on the project, we'll come across again another ATM gantry. And with this, and working with RTC and FAST, this will provide the ability to dynamically manage congestion based on the traffic conditions. Just over to the west is the new realignment of Martin Luther King. This provides a great front doorstep to the medical district and the new Yenovie Medical School. Going back down to Charleston shows you how the MLK will go up and over Charleston, which will improve interchange, capacity, mobility, but also provide local accessibility with a slip ramp from Charleston to MLK. Lastly, I'd like to discuss the ramp rating. So this shows traffic getting off the I-15 off to Sahara will go up and over, traffic from Charleston want to get onto the I-15. There's so many wonderful features with this project. There's so many to talk about. These are just a few of the highlights, and it's going to, once again, is going to be a game changer for this area roadway. So I invite you to check out our website for more information regarding project elements.
Would you announce that website so people can go look at this when they need to? And any updates on the project that commuters? How would a commuter like find out those updates? Would it be your website?
It'd be our website at nprojectneon.com, also through our social media and our Twitter handle at nprojectneon as well. Social media, also, we sign up for our news alerts, our weekly news alerts. And right now, we're beta testing a mobile app. So by end of February, we'll have an app that you can download that will send you push notifications as well. So there's many different ways, and I know City of Las Vegas has been really supportive of helping us get that message out there as well.
Yeah, I have to say, your Public Information Officer is doing a great job with the social media stuff because we continue to retweet that, those of us that are doing that. And it's good for people to get that information. I mean, the commute is going to get more challenging. They're just real growing pains, certainly, but we want to remind people to slow down in these construction areas because I notice they're not.
Indeed. So talk about what's upcoming and some of those traffic pains are happening. We're in this lime green phase.
Councilman, do you want to just talk to him now?
Thank you. I do, yes, it pertains to what you just showed us. I want to make sure, because in looking at the video and then the still photo of the Charleston 95, or excuse me, Charleston and 15 connection there, when you're on northbound 15 approaching Charleston, a lot of people get off there, but they don't want to turn, they want to go on Charleston, many of them, but so many, too many, want to then make a left turn into the Grand Central Parkway. But when I see that, it looks to me like even though we've got a double exit now going on the northbound to the, you know, eastbound Charleston, that it still looks like people can access Grand Central.
That is correct. So when you exit Charleston, northbound direction, you'd be able to actually turn directly on the Charleston, go east or west on Charleston. No longer we have to go take the Iron Horse Loop, or there's two-prong exit, it'll be a single-point exit.
Yes.
Now, though, we're creating a slip ramp adjacent with that, provides you different options to get to downtown. So when you get off at Charleston, you're going to actually have an option to go straight, straight through, which will take you, have an option, takes you to Grand Central Parkway over the Premialma Malls, the Clark County Government Center. Also, you're able to go straight through on a frontage road that takes you to Alta Bonneville.
That's the problem. It is the ability to still access Grand Central from there because people don't just make a right. They cut across three lanes of traffic while the traffic is flowing to get into Grand Central to get to those shops, and it causes an enormous jam and a potential for accidents. And I still see that here as a problem. I just don't want to be accused in a few years of saying, why didn't you bring that up, or why wasn't it engineered? Because I thought it was taken care of.
And I understand.
It's human behavior.
I understand, and I completely agree with you. So in the ultimate condition, if you were going to take Charleston, go eastbound of Charleston, make a north on the Grand Central Parkway, you're actually going through more lights than you need to than if you stay straight on the frontage road that takes you to Grand Central.
Correct. But still, you're going to be able to exit at Charleston and still do this dipsy-doo, which most people will do because they don't want to get on some frontage road a mile away. They want to get on the, they see the shopping. They've, for many years, they've gone off there. I'm just saying that if we don't have some sort of a traffic calming device or some sort of an ability to change people's behavior, they're still going to want to make that quick ride off of the freeway and then the quick left into Grand Central, and we're back where we started at that particular problem. I know what you're doing on the north side of Charleston there. It's great to be able to get rid of that stupid loop, but that other thing is a problem. I notice it all the time.
Mr. Cau, it might be a good idea that you provide Councilman Coffin with some better graphics so he can understand it more fully. Because I recognize what you're saying, and I certainly understand his concerns.
Yeah, the problem still exists. A device would be important.
I'll be happy to do so, Councilman. So project schedule, we're in this lime green phase of 2017. Our focus is going to be on the local streets, US 95, as well as the off-system ramp rating I-15. We will not be impacting I-15 during this time. That's going to happen in the blue period, or kind of our second phase. That's going to happen in 2018 around NASCAR weekend, all the way through the Thanksgiving weekend holiday, and then in 2019, we'll finish up with our HOV connection. So of your progress, like I said, is 10 quicks months. We are 32% complete on the number of construction days that we have. This is a calendar-day contract. As of today, we're roughly about 429 out of 1,300 days. So it pushes about 30%. On cost-wise, Hewitt Infrastructure West, who is the design builder, has earned over 128 million of roughly over 100, or excuse me, $571 million, which is supposed to be about 22% of completion. Our main focus that first year, as you can see on the bottom of your screen, it has been designed. That's about 85% done, and now we're just kicking off construction with 10%. So this upcoming year in 2017, you're going to see a lot of construction happening. In addition, we talked to this council many times regarding fulfilling commitments about minimizing community disruptions, and I'm happy to report back that we've done what we said we've done, and we're starting to build a good track record. So first, it's a new connection at Grand Central Parkway and Western, also on-time delivery. When we close down systems or say we're going to get improvements done, we've done so, we've done so on time. And also, that's included with minimizing disruptions. So here's a time-lapse video of what that new connection looks like at Grand Central Parkway and Western. This was complete right before the Thanksgiving weekend. I know our stakeholders along Grand Central are very happy with this improvement. Yeah, we can, I'll be happy to provide you some more information. We can have some good conversations, how we're going to mitigate that.
Councilman, you want to turn your microphone on, please? Continue, Mr. Cau.
Also, we couldn't be doing this without our community partners, and I want to very thank Las Vegas staff and City of Las Vegas staff and the Public Works staff. They've been tremendous to work with, the dedication of their commitment to get this project done on time, and we could not be out here where we are today without them. And a special shout-out to city project manager Gina Vinglass. She's done a tremendous job as her point of contact. Also, we've worked closely with the unions, providing training opportunities for MSE walls, also with local law enforcements, with emergency training with both fire and law enforcement. In addition, we can be out here with our community partners with our small business and disadvantaged business enterprises or DBEs. We've done quarterly seminars and training for local DBE firms. In addition, we've held monthly outreach focused on diversity, minority, females, veterans, and disabled, and this has translated into apprentices and staff positions on the team. Also, I'd like to point out our partnership with RTC, help right pedestrian crossings when we have closed intersections. Also, we're all about giving back and participating in opportunities for Three Square, also looking for future engineers as well as builders with our STEM outreach. So our current traffic impacts, as you're all aware, we have a major Spaghetti Bowl ramp closure with the northbound, I-15, the northbound US 95 closure down the one lane, and also some closures at MLK. This work is on schedule and is going to be complete in February. So what we're doing, reconstructing that big ramp and moving it to the north to make way for our HOV touchdown there at MLK and US 95. And then in February, this will be back in place just in time for 2017 construction impacts. So as I talked about earlier, we are building these ATM gantries, these active traffic management, actually building 12 of them early on to help with the traffic impacts to Project NEON. So you'll see lane reductions on both on US 95 and small portions on I-15 that get these constructed here in 2017. Now, the main focus, and please pay attention, this is, these 2017 impacts are significant, and they will cause traffic delays, especially along US 95 between Rancho and the Spaghetti Bowl. And we're asking the public to plan for extra travel time for their daily commute. So what we're doing here, these are two of the same pictures from February this year through December, we're necking down US 95 to two lanes in each direction. So as we're, as you can tell, the area in light blue, that's the road work, and the dark colors are the bridge work or structure work. And so the first part of February through June, we're going to push all the traffic on the south side, and then we'll flip-flop and do all the traffic on the north side. So this is what it's rendered, it's going to look as you're traveling in this configuration starting in February. So everybody's necked down the two lanes in each direction, and we'll push all the traffic on the southbound lanes. Then around the Rancho interchange, it'll be back open to normal configuration. While this is going on, also, we're doing work along MLK, and light blue, that's all the road work. And once again, the darker colors are the structures. To orientate yourself, to the right is to the north. On top of the screen is the medical district, and to the south is Grand Central Parkway. So along this area, we're kind of working our way from north to south. You'll see some overnight closures as we construct these bridges, as well as we'll be limiting Alta and Bonneville down the one lane for 100 days starting at end of February. Also, we'll have some intermittent closures of Charleston Avenue there at I-15, and we're going to construct two bridges just over Charleston. And as we go further down MLK along, down the Oki, we will have full closures of MLK between Oki to the fire station. All access to and from Fire Station 10 will be open and maintainable at all times. In addition, to point out, this will not impact the access getting onto the I-15, and this will last for 120 days. Late summer this year, Wall Street will be closed. We will have the other connection. That's why it's important for us to open that Western to Charleston connection, and this Wall Street connection will be permanently closed at that time. So at the end of 2017, the new MLK realignment will be open in its final configuration as we construct things on left of the screen on I-15 in 2018. The MLK is fully functional, and it'll look very similar to what is shown right here. And lastly, I'd like to end on communication. Mayor Protem, you said, how do you connect and how do you communicate with the project? There's many different ways through our social media, our outreach. Also, we have a hotline and our website at nprojectneon.com. We're still going to focus on us going out to the community, not the community coming to us. Different ways through our business stakeholders, also with our residents along adjacents on Wards, Ward 1. And also, we have a Public Information Office right behind Wholesome Lofter on Charleston and Western, where we have offices to hours Monday through Friday, even on Saturday. And one last point, if you're ever traveling, use the app Waze. It's the best way to go through the traffic in the Spaghetti Bowl, and we put our traffic imports there. So at this time, we'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Keller, and thank you very much for coming down here to give us this report. I think it's significant that we all understand that as we talk to our constituents and deal with the businesses in the area. NDOT's done a fabulous job in communicating, and I can't say enough about that. That one slide you showed with all of the contacts on it is probably the most significant. I know through our communications department and our efforts to partner with you to continue to get that message out there. Does Councilman Barlow, do you have a question?
I do. More so a statement, Mayor Protem. I would like to thank Mr. Keller, you and your entire team, and the Nevada Department of Transportation for a wonderful job with community outreach. That was one of my main concerns when, from the onset, when I was hosting meetings and taking meetings from the Department of Transportation as far as the community outreach, keeping the community abreast and informed, and you all have done a wonderful, wonderful job, a superb job in regards to utilizing the social media platforms, your websites, constantly sending, I know my office in particular, information as far as the latest updates. We receive that information, if not once a week, at least every other week as far as the new updates, the new closures, which will give, which provides us the opportunity to also push that information out to all of the residents and the business owners in these impacted areas and keeping them abreast. Your signage on the roadways, your websites, standing before council, and I'm not sure if you do this at the county as well or other municipal jurisdictions as far as coming in providing this level of content so that the community and business owners can actually see visually what's happening, what's taking place, why the squeeze, why the narrowing of the lanes, the transition of the lanes. And having an opportunity to see this projected gives us all an opportunity to understand that things are moving, and it's seamless as far as what my office has heard from the community and those that are impacted. And so I really want to basically take my hat off and applaud the Nevada Department of Transportation for a wonderful, wonderful job as far as making sure that you all keep abreast of that community outreach component and keeping everyone up to speed on what's coming next, what has been completed, but what's on the horizon as far as the next closure. And I believe that helps us out a lot because it gives us an opportunity in advance to make those necessary transitions in our head as far as how, in fact, we're going to commute in certain areas of town as it relates to the construction impact. So thank you for that, and thank you, Mayor Protem, for the time.
You bet, Councilman. Thank you very much. Councilman?
Is this picture that we have now, the pink, is that the purple piece of art or is that something different?
That is an artist's rendering of the Found Font sculpture, which is on the south part of Charleston.
Does it change colors?
I believe it does.
Okay, then I understand it better. I'm just trying to understand a piece of art. Thank you. And I've said many times already how much we appreciate the tremendous way you've communicated with us all.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Anthony, Councilman Beers, any questions, comments?
No, I think that this is going to be a miserable couple of years, but I'm sure looking forward to them. I would reiterate from those of us who represent the suburbs that the, we look at those empty, we look at those empty lanes for carpooling every day, noting that this is not Boston, and we do not live on top of one another, nor do we work on top of one another. And frankly, I'm not sure that they make a whole lot of sense in the far-flung western environment that we live in. So just take that back and keep in mind that not everyone is excited about the husband and wife lane, except when I'm with my wife.
You've heard us say this before, haven't you, Mr. Keller, about those?
Yes, sir, yes, sir. And to that point, as we look in the different transportation opportunities around Las Vegas, it's just one of the tools in our tool chest that we can use and utilize. And we take a look even from the R T Cs, the Transportation Investment Business Plan. It's just one of the components as they all integrate and work together.
And I'm all for a robust toolkit. However, you should use the screwdrivers on the screws, not the hammer nails in. And to me, it just looks like another lane that could alleviate congestion for all of us, rather than the occasional husband and wife trip together. Kids work too, by the way. You can also go with your child, and we see that occasionally in the H A W lane. But anyway, you've heard the point, and I just wanted to reiterate.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Councilman. Thank you, Mr. Keller. Mr. Keller, I'm curious to know, have you guys projected how many jobs have been, are going to be created? Because I know you're still not fully ramped up. You've got a long way to go.
We do have a long way to go. We expect to have 4,000, direct and indirect, and induced jobs. Right now, we have over, at the peak time of design, we have over 150 engineers just on the design builder side. They're all working here in Las Vegas. Also, in our side of the house, End dot's employed over 50 staff. Q W E T has over 200,000 craft man-hours. That's already been spent to date, and that's just going to keep growing. So we expect over a million craft hours on this job, so that translates to direct jobs.
And I think that's significant because it's just fueling the economy. This has got to be, I mean, for you and your career, I mean, the icing on the cake, right? I mean, you're the project manager.
Yes, sir, and this is a great opportunity to be part of, and I have a great team and all the resources I need to be this job to be successful. And as I've told many people, now we just have to execute. So we're on schedule as we are and on budget, and this is a top priority, as the governor said last night, and the state of the state. So we've relished on the spotlight, and we're going to get the job done.
Well, and I enjoy my relationship with End dot because of all the work going on at the Centennial Bowl right now as well. So it's been a great relationship, and I'm just happy with what's going on. I can't deny what Councilman Beers said about it's going to be miserable for the next couple of years. And we would again ask our residents and anyone commuting through that area to please slow down. Those are men and women who work and want to go home to their families. We don't want any more crashes. And I noticed when you said three crashes, you also used the word accident. They were crashes, absolutely avoidable crashes every single day on the I-15. So thank you very much for your report, and this does not take any need of motion. This is just a report. Have a great day. Thank you all. Mr. Perrigo, you are up. This is Agenda Item 45, reporter of the Department of Planning Staff and the Regional Transportation Commission of Southern Nevada, the R T C, on the update of the R T C Spencer Greenway Trail and University of Las Vegas Campus Bike Plan. This is in Ward Three, Councilman Coffin. Mr. Perrigo?
Thank you, Mayor Protam. It's a real pleasure to be here today to introduce this side of Mr. Raymond Hess, who's the Director of Planning for R T C, is going to give you a presentation. But there's been a number of agencies working on this particular trail for quite a few years, and R T C, under their leadership, is bringing it all together, and it's really a great opportunity for our city. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Hess.
Thank you very much. Mr. Hess, please state your name for the record. Thank you, Mr. Perrigo.
Yes, Mr. Mayor Protam, Councilmembers, my name is Raymond Hess. I'm the Director of Planning Services at the Regional Transportation Commission. I'm very excited today to present to you on a study that we did in partnership with a lot of local jurisdictions, including the City of Las Vegas. The genesis for this idea actually came out of the Southern Nevada Strong Regional Plan, looking for a north-south connection between U N L V campus and downtown for bicycles and pedestrians. And so the study's been going on for about a year, and we're going to give you a brief presentation about what that study entails. So just to give you an idea of what the project boundaries are, the project runs along Nevada Energy Utility Corridor between Charleston and Katy. Katy is just south of Twain, and looking at, roughly parallels Spencer Street, but Spencer Street is discontinuous, so that's why we refer to it as the Spencer Greenway Corridor. The project's schedule, it's been about a year long. It kicked off in February of last year. We've had five stakeholder advisory committee meetings and public outreaches in May and November. And right now, we're finalizing the study and giving our final presentations to different groups that are interested in finding out more about what the study is recommending. We had a very active stakeholder advisory committee, and I'd like to thank Tom Perrigo and his staff from Planning, as well as Dave Bowers and his staff from Public Works that were actively engaged in the study throughout. Nevada Energy was obviously a major partner in this as well because we were looking at their utility corridor, and we've really gotten a lot of really good input from each of those stakeholders. In addition to stakeholders, we also did a lot of public outreach as well. It had a very robust public outreach effort. We had an online survey that had nearly 1,000 responses. We worked with groups such as churches, HO As, and schools to continually gauge public sentiment on the project. We had two community meetings in May, and then two community meetings in November as well. They were held at the Boulevard Mall and U N L V campus, and the idea was obviously to locate those kind of along the corridor, to give stakeholders and residents the opportunity to come and voice their thoughts on the project. So with me today is Mr. J P Weyton from Parsons Transportation Group. He's the consultant that helped us with this study, and I'd like to bring him up today to go over the specific recommendations from the plan.
Awesome, thank you. Please state your name for the record, please.
My name is J P Weyton with Parsons. Just want to say good morning and thank you, Council, for the opportunity to present. It's been a great pleasure working with the R T C and the stakeholders on these two very exciting projects. We've got two projects to talk about, so I'm going to just spend about two or three minutes on the Spencer Trail, and then another two or three minutes on the U N L V Bike Plan. So getting started on the Spencer Greenway Trail, the existing conditions is a 100-foot corridor, Nevada Energy-owned utility corridor. There's a variety of easements and surface street connections. It's a mix of residential area, commercial, churches, and schools. One of the key questions that was asked in our survey was whether or not the participants of this survey felt that it would be a beneficial connection along the Spencer Utility Corridor. And over 90% of the folks that we surveyed agreed it would be beneficial. The project team put together a variety of trail names and logos. Here are some of the ones that were surfaced to the top as favorites. We also looked at a variety of themes. Here's three different options that were presented. Also, one of the items of our scope was to identify opportunities for art along the trail. There's nine distinct categories that were put together, ranging from parkway to wall art, electrical activities, opportunities for community to get involved, ways to enhance the crossings, also ways to integrate art into the functional aspects of the trail. The next couple of slides will show the conceptual design of the trail. At the left side, you're looking at the southern end of the corridor, which continuing to the left would connect to U N L V. As we move to the right, we're heading north. At the southern end is the Orr Middle School, where a trailhead is being recommended. Further along, we're recommending a 15-foot asphalt trail, which could be designed conceptually laid out so it doesn't impact any of the current utility lines that are in place. As you continue along, you'll see a variety of enhancements at crossings, locations identified for art opportunities, different alternatives that were looked at. And we arrive at the northern end, which is at Charleston, where there is a Wells Fargo Bank and another opportunity for a trailhead there. At the top right of this slide, we're looking at the southern end of the utility corridor. We evaluated five different options for connecting to U N L V. The preferred option was the Spencer Trail continuing the alignment, that's A four and A six, continuing south on Spencer Street, and then turning on the Harmon. This was the preferred option because of the low traffic volumes. Also, it has existing bike lanes for a portion, and it connects to the primary part of U N L V, the entrance point of U N L V. An alternative, a long-term option, could be A three, which is the Flamingo Wash. It would be a safest, most direct route, but also there's some constructability challenges and a higher price tag with that. Here, presenting a planned view visualization just south of Desert Inn, you can see the existing conditions at the top with the utility lines and a proposed improvements on the south. And if you take note, at the right bottom is a perspective view box, which we are showing from a user's view. At the top are the existing conditions. You can see the four lines of utility lines that are there. Currently, no pedestrian or bicycle facilities in the median. And what's being proposed, as we talked with Nevada Energy, we considered undergrounding all utility lines along the corridor. That turned out that it could probably be cost prohibitive. So one of the things that we looked at as an alternative was consolidating some of those telephone lines. And the graphic at the bottom demonstrates what that could look like. You can see how much it opens up the flexibility and the visual enhancement of the trail. It also shows an opportunity for an art piece at that location, some pedestrian sidewalks and crossings, and a kiosk. The next step of the study would be for the local jurisdictions to take a lead. Nevada Energy Engineering Study would need to be completed, funding identified, agreements in place, and then design, construction, and operation. This brings me to the U N L V Campus Bike Plan presentation, portion of the presentation. Some of the items that we looked at are different bike parking options that could be put in place at U N L V, ranging from the low end of bike racks or clusters of bike racks, bike lockers, to the high end, which would be parking garage cages and even fully enclosed facilities. We also looked at the different types of enhancements that could be done along the routes, ranging from shared markings with traffic calming bike lanes, taking the current concrete paths and making enhancements there, dedicating bike lanes, bike paths in certain areas, dismount paths, and also for areas where cyclists are repeated, you can have stairway ramps. The project team looked at existing conditions, including existing bike lanes, transit routes, also proposed bike lanes and routes, as well as support facilities in place now. What we're looking at here is the 10-year plan for the U N L V Campus Bike Plan. The methodology we used was identifying primary points of entry, also the primary points of destination, how we would connect those with those proposed routes, what proposed enhancements could be completed, and then what kind of support facilities could be provided to make the system successful. The 10-year plan can be somewhat intimidating to start off right away, so we also put together a near-term program that the university could implement components or the entire program within the next three years.
And so where we're at in this process is we're finalizing our presentations to the community groups that would like to hear more about it. So that's why we're here before you today. We've also gone to some town advisory boards and anticipate that we might go to the Clark County Commission as well. I also want to thank Kathy Halka, who is the Project Manager on this from the R T C side. She did a wonderful job managing this complex project. We also have a final copy of the, or a draft of the final, a copy of the final draft, as well as the appendices that we'll submit here for you as well. And we'd be happy to entertain any questions you might have.
Thank you very much, both of you. That's a great presentation. Excited to see, you know, growing up, seeing that wasted space since I was a little kid and seeing it being used for something that was, it's kind of exciting. So Councilman Coffin?
Thank you, Mayor Protam. Well, I'm very proud that it is in, all in Ward Three, I guess, from Charleston to Sahara, the city boundaries. So you gave us a near-term for the university, but I'm more curious about a near-term for what's in the city. And so I don't know, is it J B or?
J P or Jean Paul, yes.
Jean Paul, okay, Jean Paul. The thing is, is I'm curious because it could be put to use immediately inside Las Vegas city limits. We don't have any major thoroughfares to cross. I do want to make sure, I do know where it crosses at Oke, and there's not much traffic there, and there is stop signs in that vicinity for people to cross, I think. I know they're very close because there's a school there. What about at Sahara, what about at St. Louis?
St. Louis has an existing school crossing, and so any kind of recommendations made at that location would have to be coordinated with that. But there would be, the plan recommends an enhanced system at that place, which would be advanced warning signs and a beacon as well. We just don't want to be in conflict with the.
Well, those are not expensive. I think we can do things like that for a near-term plan, so I'm very concerned that we make sure that, you know, we see a near-term, which I guess would be up to us, the city, not R T C. So there's the rub. In essence, as I understand, it's all been designed by R T C, but now it's up to the locality, the community, city in this case, for us to take over. It has been nice to be able to call Nevada Power, Envy Energy, and say, take care of that thing. It's dirty, the papers are piling up, and there's signs on the fence, and so would you take them down? And they do, they did. Now, this would make it, well, who would be responsible? Let's put it this way, for maintenance.
So you raise a great point, and that's something that would have to be explored further. Our understanding right now is that Nevada Energy actually controls some of that property, as well as has easements on it. Whether the property ownership would have to transfer over to one of the municipalities for ownership and liability reasons would have to be further explored with Nevada Energy, or whether you would continue to negotiate an existing easement and, you know, explore some of those liability concerns. You know, it should be noted here, too, that, you know, the Nevada Energy infrastructure is probably one of the more difficult pieces of this puzzle, right? The actual construction of the trail is pretty straightforward. A lot of the crossings and such have been identified in terms of what those treatments might be and what might be most appropriate. But because there's so many power lines that run through that corridor, looking at undergrounding them or even consolidating them really is going to be one of the higher, the bigger challenges, and so.
Undergrounding would never work, it's too expensive. It's not worth the money. So we put it above ground, and we maybe consolidate. Now, that's a good idea with the new steel poles that are better and can carry a lot more load. And I think the residents on both sides of the Greenway would appreciate that. So then enforcement of the behavior of people within there becomes a critical thing. We want to make sure that it is, doesn't fall into the category of a park. We obviously have, these are conversations between us and our city employees, I think, but I want to thank you. And of course, I sit on the Southern Nevada Regional Planning Coalition, as does Councilman Beers, and Southern Nevada Strong came from R P C, and now it is under the jurisdiction of the R T C, but I think it is. And anyway, so we're very happy to have been there at the birth, and this is a wonderful contribution to the community. And you've got to think about it for a minute. This is probably the cheapest way to have an instant bike path, instant walkable plan from U N L V all the way downtown, virtually downtown. And I suppose if it had only been a half mile to the west, you could have put the rail there. But Maryland Parkway is going to be where it is. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Coffin. Councilman Beers?
Thank you, Mayor Protam. I never knew this corridor was there. It looks like a couple of tightly-integrated schools, elementary schools, have built parking lots across that corridor, one location in the city and one location in the county. How, how do you work around that problem?
Well, we met with each of the schools to identify their needs with those sort of parking lots, and the ones that we talked with have, they're pretty much at capacity. So what we're recommending, and we worked with Nevada Energy on this, is extending their parking lots so that they can maintain the spaces that are required, and then using a portion of that for the trail.
Are they currently parked on Envy Energy property with an easement from Envy Energy?
Yes, correct.
I see. Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Councilman Beers. Anybody else have any questions for these gentlemen? Gentlemen, thank you very much for the presentation. We're excited to see what comes of it. Thank you very much. Thank you. All right, we will move on to Agenda Item 46, Discussion Possible Action Regarding, oh, I'm sorry, Councilman, yeah, Councilman Anthony, would you please?
Thank you, Mayor Protam. There's been a little confusion about item number 40, so I would like to make a motion to recall item number 40.
There's a motion to recall consent to Agenda Item Number 40. Please vote.
I'll have to read it.
Oh, I have to read it, huh? You can vote and post though while I'm digging through my book. Got it, I got it. Okay, Councilman? Let me read Agenda Item 40. That motion passes, by the way, I think. Yes, it does. Agenda Item 40, this was on the consent agenda. This was for possible action to approve the installation of speed cushions on Buttonwillow Drive between Sun City Boulevard and High Range Drive, $30,000, Traffic Improvements Capital Project Fund. This is in Ward Four, Councilman Anthony. Councilman Anthony?
So the recall passed?
Yes.
Correct. Okay, so I would like to make a motion to obey this to April 19th.
I thought you voted.
Oh, we didn't vote on a recall. Okay, all right. Well, first I'll make a motion to recall item number 40.
Motion to recall, item 40, please vote. Please post, that does pass.
Thank you. Thank you for your indulgence, and I would like to make a motion to obey item number 40 to April 19th.
So motion to obey Agenda Item 40, please vote. So motion to obey Agenda Item 40, please vote. And please post. And that motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. And that takes us to Agenda Item 46, Discussion for Possible Action Regarding the Installation of Speed Humps on Gilmore Avenue between Bradley Road and Tom Boulevard, $15,000 Traffic Improvements Capital Project Fund. This is in Ward Five, Councilman Barlow.
Morning, Mayor Protam. Members of the City Council, for the record, Mike Jensen, Public Works.
Morning, Mr. Jensen.
I'd like to give you all just a quick overview of the location that's in question. We're discussing a section of Gilmore Avenue, and it is located between Bradley on the west and Tom Boulevard on the east. And immediately to the west is Rancho Drive, and to the east is Decatur. And we received a request from residents who front that segment of Gilmore Avenue. There's actually 12 houses who front that section of road. It's a quarter-mile stretch of roadway. The houses were built in 1979 when it was certainly a much more quieter area, and the concerns were speeding along that corridor. We completed a traffic study at the residents' request, and the study found that there was about 155 cars a day using that stretch of road. The council had adopted minimum thresholds for the consideration of speed humps, and that minimum threshold is between 800 and 3,000 cars a day. So because the volumes were low, we informed the requested that speed humps would not be considered any further because they fell out of the criteria established by council. And the requested requested that we bring it forward to Traffic and Parking Commission for additional considerations. I want to say we had a tremendous turnout from the residents. I think almost every resident who fronted that street came to the meeting, and they were able to discuss with the Traffic and Parking Commission additional things they felt that should be considered. Those items included that there are horses in the nearby area that use that street. The road, when it was built in '79, does not have any sidewalk, and the residents walk along the street. And then just on, to the east end of the street is John Mall's Meats, terrific, longtime business. And there's a couple other businesses in the area that the residents felt that while our traffic study captured just 155 vehicles a day, there could be times when traffic uses the corridor to go to some of those businesses. So they felt those additional considerations should be considered by the Traffic and Parking Commission. And with that, the Traffic and Parking Commission approved the recommended approval for installation of speed humps on that corridor. On a quarter-mile street like this, if we were to move forward with that, we'd put in about three speed humps, and I'd be happy to answer any other questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Jensen. Appreciate that. Question? Anybody, Councilman Coffin?
I have a question, although this is Councilman Barlow's word, he knows it much better than I do. But if it has no sidewalks, aren't people just liable to, habitual, the speeders particularly, aren't they just liable to go around them into the dirt and/or avoid them?
Great question, Councilman Coffin. Now, we get that question a lot, and as it turns out, this particular stretch of Gilmore, when it was built, actually has curbs. It has curbs, and they have streetlights. The only thing they're missing is a separate sidewalk behind the curb.
Oh, okay.
So it's a fully curved street.
That should discourage.
But, great, great observation. Those usually are the challenge.
One more thing, when we do these studies, do we also measure the speeds? Because that's maybe 150, but it might be people going 50 in a 25. What were the speeds?
Great observation, Councilman. That's exactly the concern that they brought to us, is the roads posted 25, and the eastbound direction coming from Bradley over to Tom, kind of where Mall's Meats are, just off to the south, the eastbound direction had an 85th percentile speed of 55 miles per hour. The westbound direction was 35. And so that was, I think, some of the additional discussions that the Traffic and Parking Commission took into account.
Okay, thank you very much. Councilman Barlow?
I would like to see the speed bumps installed, so I move for approval.
I understand there's a motion to approve Agenda Item 46.
Could I ask one question?
Please, Councilman.
Before we vote, it doesn't matter for the vote, I believe, but what's the difference, do we have definitions between humps and bumps and cushions?
Great question, Councilwoman Tarkanian. A few months back, I had a presentation on a new device that we installed as a pilot test in Ward Three on 15th Street, just south of Charleston. And historically throughout the valley, we've had requests for speed humps on streets that happened to be secondary fire response routes or even primary response routes. And unfortunately, when we get those requests, we have to inform the requesters that fire department does not permit speed humps on a emergency route. And so for many years, we really didn't have an option, until recently a new tool came around called the Speed Pillow, Speed Cushion. It's got a couple of different names to it. And what it basically is, is a device that allows a fire truck to span between a small gap, and it doesn't slow down the fire trucks. And so when we heard about this, we met with our fire department, we did a test out at the east yard, they brought the fire trucks out, we checked to make sure the device would work, and we installed the first one on 15th Street, had very positive feedback from the residents, and we subsequently added another one after we saw that it was able to hold up with our heat. They're rubber, and so to answer your question, Councilwoman, they're a very similar device, but they're designed specifically for those fire response routes where a traditional speed hump wouldn't be, wouldn't be allowed.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Beers, I mean, Councilman Coffin, I'm sorry.
I'd like to just add to that, the experiment is going well. It's still a little too early to tell if it'll work, only because you're putting them into the asphalt. So we don't know if the fascinings will last for several summers, or if it's okay. That's the important thing, and it is that, it's the spacing that allows our vehicles to go around. So a bike, a motorcycle, and an emergency vehicle of any kind can straddle them without a big bounce. So I mean, I think that they're worth it because they're cheap and easily put in, and if they have to be removed, that's no problem either, as opposed to trying to carve out a bunch of concrete or asphalt.
Thank you. Councilman Barlow? Oh, I'm sorry, there was a motion to approve. Has everyone voted? Please post. Mr. Jensen, thank you again very much. That motion passes. All right, we are on Agenda Item 47, for Possible Action from the Planning Commission. Gus Flengus, his term expiration is 2017, he has resigned. Mr. Flengus was appointed by Councilman Anthony in July of 2009 to represent Ward Four. He has resigned from the board effective January 11, 2017, and a replacement needs to be appointed to fill his unexpired term. Procedure for this board is recommendation by the appropriate member of the council with the approval of the council. Councilman Anthony, I understand you have someone to appoint.
Thank you, Mayor Protam. First of all, I want to thank my good friend Gus Flengus for serving on the Planning Commission for seven and a half years. He was the chair for a couple of years, and he really did a great job, and he was, he was an excellent voice for planning in the city of Las Vegas, and I know he was very well-respected as far as his opinion is concerned. So I want to, again, thank him for serving on the Planning Commission. I have a replacement for him. It's somebody that no one up here has ever heard of. Just kidding. It's someone that is very well-known, was on the Planning Commission for a number of years prior to Gus, and he was on the city council, representing Ward Four very well, and I am honored to recommend for appointment David Steinman, who is the president of a great community, Sun City Summerlin. So I, I don't know if I've asked you if you wanted to accept yet, but it sounds like since you're here, you probably do.
I may be leaning that way, yes, exactly. Mayor Protam, thank you. The Councilman, thank you very much for putting my name up. I have been waiting for this for a long time, ever since I left the last time. And patience wins in the end, I hope, and I'm looking forward to serving in the city of Las Vegas.
Councilman Steinman, good to see you and welcome to our city council, and.
Yeah, luckily, you're still a young guy.
Oh, yeah, still young.
So you're going to be serving for a long time, and I'm going to need your help on Button Willow with those speed hump bumps.
I guess so. That came out of nowhere.
Yeah, we'll talk about that.
Yeah, that came out of nowhere.
So anyway, Mayor Protam, I would like to nominate David Steinman as the Ward Four representative on Planning Commission.
Okay, well, as a motion to appoint Councilman Steinman as the Las Vegas Planning Commission, please vote. And please post. That motion passes. Congratulations, Commissioner.
Thank you very much, and thanks to all of you, all the council people on this end, too. I thank you very much for your recognition. I appreciate it. I'll do a job.
Good to have you back.
Thank you.
Protam?
Yes, Councilman?
First, I wanted to welcome David back. He's certainly someone that's great to work with. And secondly, Gus Flengus did a great job, and I hope he knows how much we appreciate it. Nice to have you back, David.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. All right, that takes us to Agenda Item 48, Recommending Committee. Bills eligible for adoption at this meeting. Bill number 201674. Councilman Anthony, would you like the bill read?
Yes, sir.
Mayor Protam, with your indulgence, Deputy City Attorney John Reddill will be reading the bills into the record.
Good deal. Thank you, Mr. Reddell.
Bill number 2016-74, in ordinance to continue to authorize on a temporary basis a partial waiver of the origination charge for restaurant service, bar licenses, and to provide for other related matters.
Thank you, Councilman. Is there a motion?
Move for approval.
Move for approval on Agenda Item 48. Please vote. And please post. That motion passes. We are now on Agenda Item 49. This is Recommending Committee also. This is Bills eligible for adoption at a later meeting. Item number 49, Bill number 201670, will be heard at a later meeting. We will move to the new bills. Agenda Item 50, New Bills. Item number 50, Bill number 20171, will be heard at the Recommending Committee meeting on Monday, January 30, 2017. Would you please read the bill?
Bill number 2017-1, in ordinance to extend the boundaries of the city, to particularly describe the land to be annexed, to make its inhabitants subject to the laws, obligations, and benefits of the city, and to provide for other related matters.
Thank you. New Bill number 2017-1 is assigned to the Recommending Committee members, Councilman Barlow, Anthony, and Coffin. If any so designated or unable to attend, the clerk's office will coordinate finding substitutes as necessary at the mayor's discretion. Thank you. The morning session of the city council is now in recess. We will begin the afternoon session at 1:00 PM.[1307.54] There we go. Good to see you. All right, well, good afternoon, everybody. I will call this afternoon's session of the Las Vegas City Council to order. We are on Agenda Item 51, for possible action. Any items that the council staff and/or applicant wish to be stricken, tabled, withdrawn, or held in abeyance to a future meeting may be brought forward and acted upon at this time. Councilwoman D'Arcani.
The following items are going to be either stricken or obeyed. Item number 52, GPA 62387, is an abeyance item, and the request is to obey it to February 15th, 2017, request by the applicant. Item number 53, ZON 62392, is an abeyance item, rezoning related to GPA 62387. The applicant owner is Seventy Acres LLC. The request is to obey to February 15th, 2017, and it was made by the applicant. Item number 54, SDR 62393, is an abeyance item, site development plan review related to GPA 62387. Abeyance to February 15th, 2017, was requested by the applicant. Item number 55, WVR 67096, an abeyance item, waiver, Applicant Summit Homes of Nevada LLC, request was to strike, and that request was made by Councilman Ross. Item number 62, SUP 66806, a special use permit. The applicant owner is Zeus One Investments LLC at 1612 South Sixth Street, and the request was to obey.
Withdraw without prejudice.
Sorry, I didn't have the part here. Withdraw without prejudice. And item number 69, SUP 67474, special use permit. Applicant owner, the Sylvia Bruen Family Trust. The request was to obey to April 5th, 2017, and it was made by the applicant.
And that's your motion?
My motion is to accept these as given.
Thank you very much. Does a motion? Please vote. And please post. And that motion passes. That takes us to Agenda Item 56. This is ROC 67688. It is a public hearing. Applicant owner, D.R. Horton Incorporated, for possible action on a request for review of condition of an approved tentative map, TMP 63989, to delete condition number two, which states in conjunction with creation, declaration, and prior to recordation of the covenants, codes, and restrictions, or CCNRs, or conveyance of any unit within the community, the developer is required to record a declaration of private maintenance requirements, DPMR, as a covenant on all associated properties. And on behalf of all current and future property owners, the DPMR is to include a listing of all privately owned and/or maintained infrastructure improvements, along with assignment of maintenance responsibility for each to the common interest community or the respective individual property owners, and is to provide a brief description of required level of maintenance for privately maintained components. The DPMR must be reviewed and approved by the City of Las Vegas Department of Field Operations prior to recordation, and must include a statement that all properties within the community are subject to assessment for all associated costs should be private maintenance obligations not be met. And the City of Las Vegas be required to provide for said maintenance. Also, the CCNR are to include a statement of obligation of compliance with the DPMR following recordation. The developers submit copies of the recorded DPMR and CCNR documents to the City of Las Vegas Department of Field Operations on 15.47 acres at the northeast corner of La Madre Way and Maverick Street. This is RD's single-family residential restricted zone. This is in Councilman Anthony's ward. Is the applicant here?
I am. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the council, Stephanie Allen, 1980 Festival Plaza, here on behalf of the applicant, D.R. Horton. If I could direct your attention to the overhead, this property is located, as you mentioned, at the northeast corner of La Madre on the south side, and Maverick on the west side, Broncos on the east, and Washburn is along the north. This is an approved project. This is what the map looks like. It's an approved project with 55 lots and an RE zone that D.R. Horton will be under construction here shortly. The request is actually a waiver of condition with the requirement that requires an HOA, and this is a very unique situation. In this particular instance, there are no common maintenance obligations. The streets are all public around the entire project. There are no common elements with the exception of two small landscape strips, one along La Madre and one along Washburn. And what we've seen in the City of Las Vegas and in other jurisdictions is sometimes when there are just these landscape strips, that those particular homeowners would maintain those landscape strips. So they'd have the benefit of the builder, D.R. Horton, developing it and putting in all that landscaping, similar to this picture here, where not only do they improve the front yard, but they improve the side yard and put some landscaping in. And then their water meter includes not only their front yard drip system, but also the side yard drip system. So in this instance, that would be our request that these seven homeowners be obligated to maintain their side yard landscape instead of requiring that this community form an HOA just to have 55 homeowners spend money every month in perpetuity for who knows how long on the maintenance of this small landscaping obligation. So we know this is a unique situation. In most instances, D.R. Horton would form an HOA, and they do form HOAs. But in this instance, we believe it warrants a waiver of that condition. We very much appreciate your approval today.
Thank you, Ms. Allen. Appreciate your comments. I will note that staff is recommending denial on this item. It is a public hearing. Does anyone wish to be heard on this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Mr. Perrigo.
Thank you, Mayor Proton. The request of condition to be deleted is a standard condition of approval that has been placed upon every tentative map approved within the City of Las Vegas since the early 2000s. The condition was created to alleviate undue hardship on adjacent property owners, create a high level of landscape maintenance, as well as decrease expenditures of code enforcement resources, and that is why staff is recommending denial. However, we do recognize this is a unique situation, as explained by Ms. Allen, and if council does want to move forward, with an exception in this very narrow case, staff has prepared a possible revised condition for your consideration.
Are you going to read that condition?
If that's the direction the council would like to go, I would be happy to.
This is a challenging piece, and I'm concerned about the direction we're going. So I think you used some key words there. This is almost an isolated incident in regards to these amenities for this neighborhood. I believe we'll probably see more of these, and we need to keep our eyes open, but I don't want to start that slippery slope in that direction. You and I talked about Councilman Anthony. So with that, I'll turn over to Councilman Anthony. Thank you, Mr. Perrigo.
Thank you. And I agree with you, Mayor Proton, and we had a nice meeting between the Home Builders' Association and Mr. Perrigo yesterday, and it is something that we're probably going to get more of these in the future, but it's something that Tom and the home builders, I think, can have a good dialogue to find out how to deal with these in the future. But this one is, I mean, if you look at the map, it is kind of silly to have, I don't know, 60 homes, support a little piece of property on each side. So what I wanted to ask you, I mean, the reason we do this is to make sure that there is nice landscaping on those little strips, so when people are driving by, it looks like a nice neighborhood. So somebody has to take care of that piece of property. And the homeowner does actually own that piece, correct?
Correct.
They do. So the one thing I asked you is if the house is constructed with the block wall in such a way that the homeowner doesn't feel like it's their responsibility to maintain it, then they probably won't, and that's why you would need an HOA. So, for example, on the back of those houses, if there was landscaping along the back there, then you would have to have an HOA because those houses are not going to feel like they need to take care of that piece of property. So you would have to have an HOA. So the one thing I asked you, and you said you would take care of it, is when they construct those houses, the homeowner has to feel like it's their piece of property. They have to feel just like that one. So maybe the block wall has to be moved back a little bit more or lowered, so when they're looking at their home, they feel like the front yard belongs to them, the side yard belongs to them, so they're going to feel like they need to maintain it, and that's going to cause them to maintain it. So you said you would talk to D.R. Horton about doing something like that.
Yes, sir, through you, Mr. Chairman. D.R. Horton is absolutely willing to do that. In fact, we work together with your staff, and I think the condition that Mr. Perrigo was going to read in addresses not only the wall, making sure that it's back so that it does feel like the side yard is part of the front yard, but also a notice to the homeowners, a plaque put in their garage that would, you know, be a constant reminder of the first homeowner, and if it's sold to a subsequent homeowner, so that they know they've got that maintenance obligation and that they continue to maintain it.
Okay. I think that can solve it. Yeah, go ahead.
Counselman, kind of tangentially that this conversation brings up, thank you, Mayor Proton. Is the block wall that we can't quite see, but since I've seen the picture without the video assist, I can, I know where it is, is that block wall a design element from Horton, or is that a city planning requirement?
So there is a planning requirement, that it be, especially on these corner lots, that it be set backs from a visibility standpoint. So, and I believe this condition would take it even a step further, that we would, we'd want the wall far enough so that any side yard windows are part of the rear yard, so there's some privacy, but we can push this back a bit so that it does feel more like it's the front yard, and the homeowner feels like it's more of their ownership and their maintenance obligation. But yes, there is a code requirement.
So was, the way that is configured now, is that design element in excess of planning requirements, or is that planning requirement?
So this is just a sample. This is not what the actual property would look like. My guess is this is probably what the code requires, and we will go in excess of that.
I just remember growing up in Las Vegas with corner lots, and they had yard on both sides. I would think that that homeowner would prefer to have that, would prefer to have that block wall scaled way, way back. I don't know. So I'm trying to figure out if that's a requirement that we're putting on, or that's D.R. Horton's idea. If it's D.R. Horton's idea, hats off.
So...
If it's my city's idea, we might have to look at changing our code.
I believe the code does require that the wall be pushed back.
It does.
Whether, I don't know the exact dimensions of this, but yes, the code does require that the wall be pushed back so that you have visibility when you come around this corner, and then D.R. Horton will take that a step further.
Counselman, I think Mr. Perrigo would like to say something.
Mr. Mayor Proton.
Tom, did you have anything to add to that? No? Okay. Councilman Coffin?
Thank you. Well, I've noticed that, too, and the sad thing is, the code does allow that, and it's bad. For example, I live in a house, I used to live, '60 to '68, we lived in a house at 11th and St. Louis across from Fremont Junior High, and we did not have a wall like that. It went, essentially, it started where the backyard would start. Since then, the current owner, I don't know, maybe 20, 25 years ago, put up a wall to meet code, but it looks horrible. It actually, I think, can go almost to the front of the house. I forget where it is. It can't be sighted, and it's ugly, and yet it's conforming. So, you know, that can be, that can bite you both ways. You put something in code you don't really want if the planners knew what was going on out there. And in fact, that's undesirable, because at a corner like this, it's especially egregious. Because the corner makes this wall become a blight to everybody. So, and I don't want to go into the details of the owner or the exact address, but I have to say that I've had code out there a few times based on a lot of complaints, and our people cannot do anything about it. It's worse, much worse than that. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counselman. Mr. Perrigo, would you like to address any of those thoughts? Are we the City of Las Vegas requiring this developer to do X, Y, Z in regards to these open spaces?
It sounds like it's something that we need to look into, because that is not required. So there are requirements if they choose to put the wall in, in terms of how far forward it can come, and it can only come so far forward, it can't come all the way to the corner. And as a perimeter subdivision wall, it has certain requirements in terms of contrasting materials and decorative block and all that kind of stuff, but it isn't required to put the wall in. So I'll have to double back with Councilman Coffin and see what's going on with that situation, because I'm just not aware of where the city has required that wall to be there.
Well, we're not requiring, are we requiring these common areas as well for our code?
Yes, the common area is required. The six-foot, well, depending, again, depending on the street and so on, but in this instance, it's required for a six-foot landscape buffer between the sidewalk and the wall.
Counselman Beers, I think that would answer your question.
If I get a stop, is the wall required at all?
May I interrupt? I may have misinformed you. It is possibly, the house built in 1959 is pre-code, and so stuff added afterwards may or may not have done with permits. I don't know. But in any event, it's, it is apparently in code at this time. So added later, I don't know when, that was grandfathered in or so on, but let's, anyway, let's forget my example.
Well, Counselman Coffin, I think our code requires common areas in developments. I think that's what we're getting to, but I want to, Mr. Scott?
He's asking, is the wall required at all?
The wall is not required.
So that's a developer?
That's a developer.
If there are standards and requirements if the wall is installed, yes, but it is not required.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Allen. Counselman Anthony?
Okay. So what is my motion, Tom?
I think where we left off, Mayor Proton, is the reading in of the magical condition.
Okay.
Okay. So since this is a review of condition number two, the request is to delete it, given the direction that the council is taking, staff would recommend that rather than deleting the condition, we revise it. And here is a revised condition that we would propose. No corner side perimeter screen wall shall be permitted in front of the homes on proposed lots 1, 15, 16, 30, 33, I'm sorry, 30, 31, 44, and 45. A permanently affixed plaque shall be installed within the garages of lots 1, 15, 16, 30, 31, 44, and 45, indicating the owner's responsibility to maintain all landscaping on their property adjacent to the public right of way. A note shall be placed on the recorded final map indicating that the owners of lots 1, 15, 16, 30, 31, 44, and 45 are responsible for maintaining all landscaping on their property adjacent to the public right of way.
Can I ask one question?
Please.
Tom, now, will that recordation on the final map also be in their documents when it's sold? So would it be recorded on the parcel as well? Because I think there's going to be an issue if the next generation of owners comes and, you know, and not knowing.
Yeah, plaque on the wall is probably not going to be enough.
Prior to purchasing it.
That final provision in the condition, recording on the final map, that is a legally recorded document that if, you know...
But when the property transfers, that will be in that particular home's documents.
I'm not sure, but if it ever becomes an issue at some future point, then code enforcement staff would have that legally recorded document that says that this is what the responsibility is.
But I'd maybe propose that those recommendations, those conditions, all would be recorded on those particular parcels that you referenced, just so that it does carry forward. Just on those lots that you referenced.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Scott. Thank you, Mr. Perrigo. Counselman Anthony?
Okay, I guess I will make a motion to add that condition to the condition.
And we're fine with that. They do provide it in all of the initial disclosures. They'll disclose to those seven homeowners that it's their maintenance obligation, and we could even do an additional disclosure if you'd like us to, to be recorded against the property. That's fine. It just protects everyone.
Okay. That's my motion, then.
Okay. There's a motion to approve Agenda Item 57 with the added condition, amended condition. Thank you. Please vote. And please post. And that motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Allen. Good to see you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now, on Agenda Item 58, this is VAC 67371. It is a public hearing. Applicant owner, Pre Rancho Jones LLC, for possible action on a request for a petition to vacate a portion of Alexander Road east of Rancho Drive. This is in Ward 5, Councilman Barlow. The planning committee, pardon me? Did I forget 57? I did. And I'm getting ahead of myself. Let's go back to 57. Sorry, Mr. Wallace. Ms. Lewis, yeah. We're on fifty, Agenda item fifty-seven, I apologize. This is ROC six, seven, four, eight, one, public hearing. Applicant Catherine Quo, owner, Vegas Godspeed LLC, for possible action, on a request for review of condition of an approved rezoning Z dash eight-two dash eight-six to amend condition number two. It states, no retail sales be allowed in this development at six, seven, five, three through six, seven, seven, three West Charleston Boulevard. This is C-one limited commercial zone, zone. It is in Councilwoman Tarkanian's Ward one. Staff recommends approval subject to conditions. This is a public hearing, I declare it open. Is the applicant present? Want to come up to the microphone and introduce yourselves, please, to the city council? Please state your name. Either one. They're both on.
Hi, my name's Catherine Quo.
Okay, welcome.
Thank you.
Do you have any comments?
Huh?
Do you have any comments?
Yeah, we have some photos of, like, the nearby properties adjacent, across the street and diagonally across, to show that the neighborhood has essentially changed in the last thirty years since this condition was filed and recorded, that the neighborhood's changed. It's, there's a lot of retail surrounding on all sides. And we actually only wanted to be able to use one of the buildings in the front for retail, but they said we have to actually appeal for the entire property, but that's not our intention. Most of the property is actually already leased to office, we're not gonna change that. It's just the one that has Charleston frontage that we're looking to be able to use for retail.
Okay, thank you very much. This is a public hearing. Anyone wish to speak on this item? Seeing none, Mr. Perrigo.
And can I submit these photos?
You certainly can.
Okay.
Please do. Clerk will grab them for me.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor Protem. Staff finds the land uses permitted by the C-one Limited Commercial zoning district to be compatible with the existing surrounding land uses of the subject site, and can be conducted in a manner that is harmonious with the existing surrounding land uses as well, and therefore we recommend approval.
Thank you, Mr. Perrigo. I will turn the time over to Councilwoman Tarkanian.
Mr. Perrigo, why couldn't they do just the one area that they wanted, the one business area? Change that to allow retail sales. That's what you said, wasn't it?
Yeah, when we were, that's what we were told, that I had to apply for the whole property. There's eleven buildings, but we're really only looking for six, seven, five, three, which is one of those buildings that has Charleston frontage.
So this was a, it sounds like a, a condition placed on a Councilwoman-
No, no, I know it was a condition placed decades ago, but what I was, I do have some residents in the area that had a concern, and I just, one, if you just had the one building, I mean, the one office, then I don't think they would have any concern at all. They're just feeling that if it was all open, that when some left, it would bring in more retail. So that's why I asked the question, because the way you framed it, we could've had a win-win situation.
Yeah.
I'd like to go for that.
Yeah. We don't know either. That's what we were told when we met with the people in the planning, and they told us to apply for the whole property, which I didn't understand either.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, through you, Councilwoman. The, typically, these conditions apply to the entire property, and that's why, just following standard procedure. I suppose we could work on a condition, again, that would revise that condition to speak to only certain buildings. So, in other words, the condition that's on there since nineteen eighty-six, that no retail would occur, we could just apply that to certain buildings and eliminate the one building from that. We'd have to, if we could put this off till the end of the meeting, give us time to work through that and double-check the, oh, Mr. Lowenstein has already worked through that, so I'll turn it over to Mr. Lowenstein.
Good afternoon, Mayor Protem. If you're eliminating to one building, which particular building are you wanting to limit it to? There's sixty-seven, seventy-three, and sixty-seven, fifty-three West Charleston are the two addresses.
Sixty-seven, fifty-three.
So then I would just revise the condition to say retail, or, I guess, you just want to use it for general retail?
Yeah, just for that building.
Then-
Say, no retail sales should be allowed in this development with the exception of sixty-seven, fifty-three?
Yes.
West Charleston Boulevard.
Is that one unit, or is that?
It's a whole building in the complex.
Okay, but the other, the other building, you, we would not have it in then?
No, the other building's leased already, and it's a medical office right now.
Okay. I just thought that that way, and may, I'm sure that in the future, it'll turn so that maybe there wouldn't be any problems whatsoever, but because a lot of the residents in that area, believe it or not, were there when this was done, and they, they feel that the retail that we say we have around there is not really retail, it's nonprofit organizations, it's doctors, you know, it's not selling things so very much, the ones that are closest to it. So if we could do it that way, I would prefer. Can you do it?
Yes, I think everything's in order, since this is a, a review of condition. So, again, rather than eliminating that, we would just amend it, so that, it currently says no retail sales be allowed in this development, and we would amend it, as Mr. Lowenstein suggests, no retail sales be allowed in this development, except in, well, I'll let him finish it up. With the exception of sixty-seven, fifty-three West Charleston Boulevard. And if you look at the map that's, or the overhead before you, and you can see the subject property, there are those two buildings at front Charleston, the, the building that would be accepted out of that condition is the larger of the two. See, there's one that's sort of square and one that's rectangular. It's the one that's rectangular that would then be accepted. So no retail sales would occur anywhere else in that complex except that one building, if you approve that condition.
Yeah. Well, I would move to approve the changing of the condition, so that in, that the condition relating to no retail sales will not be within, will be excluded from the building at six, seven, five, three West Charleston. Is that all right?
There's a motion with an amended condition. Please vote on Agenda item fifty-seven.
And then I might say to the people who might be watching us on TV that had concerns, that this sort of cuts it down the middle and makes it fair, I think, both ways.
Thank you, Councilwoman. And please post. It passed? Okay. And that motion passes. Good luck. Thank you very much. Now we'll start with Agenda item fifty-eight. VAC six, seven, three, seven, one. It is a public hearing. Applicant owner, Pre-Rancho Jones LLC, for possible action on a request for a petition to vacate a portion of Alexander Road east of Rancho Drive, and Counselman Barlow's Ward five. The planning commission and staff recommend approval. This is a public hearing, which I do declare open, and I see the applicant's representative is present. Please state your name for the record.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protem. Council members, my name is Tony Celeste, address nineteen eighty Festival Plaza Drive. Here on behalf of the applicant, what we have before you is, I believe, essentially a cleanup item. We have a vacation for a small portion of what is the Alexander right-of-way. As you can see on the screen, it's just a little portion that bisects the property that's located on the northeast corner, essentially, of Rancho and Alexander. We appreciate staff's recommendation of approval as well as planning commissions.
Thank you, Mr. Celeste. It is a public hearing. Does anyone wish to speak on this item? Seeing none. Mr. Perrigo, you have anything, any thoughts on this?
Just very quickly, Mayor Protem, the Department of Public Works and Department of Planning are not opposed to petition of vacation. The Department of Public Works requested the proposed vacation of right-of-way per condition of approval number one, associated with approved parcel map six, six, one, two, zero. Therefore, staff recommends approval.
Okay, public hearing is closed. Thank you for your comments. Counselman Barlow.
Mayor Protem?
I'm sorry. Counselman Anthony?
I am on the board of directors for the Founders Academy, so I will be abstaining on this item, and I believe Councilwoman Beers has the same comment.
Counselman Beers, you want to put that on the record?
I have the same comment.
Okay. Councilwoman, your microphone's still on, are you gonna abstain too? Counselman Barlow, please.
Move for approval subject to the amendments from planning. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. There's a motion on the floor. Please vote, and please post. And that motion passes.
Thanks.
And I think now we're on fifty-nine, which is VAC six, seven, four, five, seven. It is a public hearing. Applicant owner, City of Las Vegas, possible action on a request for petition to vacate portions of Commerce Street, Wyoming Avenue, and Main Street adjacent to Block six of Boulder Edition. This is in Counselman Coffin's Ward three. The planning commission and staff recommend approval. These, this is a public hearing, which I declare open. Does anyone wish to be heard on this? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Mr. Perrigo?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. As the rights of way to be vacated are not currently used for right-of-way purposes, and will not result in reduction of traffic handling capacity, staff recommends approval. In fact, Mr. Anderson would like your approval for his vacation.
Like you're going on vacation?
Well, I would, I would certainly like to, but I am actually the applicant's representative on this vacation. The applicant is the City of Las Vegas, the application is in order, and we do request your approval.
Okay, thank you very much, gentlemen. Appreciate it. Counselman Coffin?
I'll move for approval.
There's a motion to approve Agenda item fifty-nine, Mr. Anderson's vacation. Please vote, and please vote, post, and that motion passes. All right, that takes us to Agenda item sixty, Z O N six, seven, three, eight, five. It is a public hearing. Applicant Sunrise Children's Foundation, owner, Church Trinity Life Center, for possible action on a request for a rezoning from R-one Single Family Residential and C-one Limited Commercial to C-V Civic on three point zero nine acres located at nine, five, zero, and one thousand East St. Louis Avenue. This is in Counselman Coffin's Ward three. The planning commission and staff recommend approval. Again, this is a public hearing. Does anyone wish to be heard on this item? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Mr. Perrigo?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Rezoning the subject site from R-one Single Family Residential and C-one Limited Commercial to C-V Civic will bring the property into compliance with the existing general plan designation of PF Public Facility. Therefore, staff is recommending approval.
Wonderful, thank you very much, Mr. Perrigo. Counselman Coffin?
I, I move for approval.
A motion to approve Agenda item sixty. Please vote, and please post. That motion passes, thank you. We're in Agenda item sixty-one, this is VAR six, 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 eight, nine. It is a public hearing. Applicant owner, Winograd Utka, I hope I didn't slaughter that too much, for possible action on a request for variance to allow a three-foot side yard setback, where five feet is required for proposed home addition on, on zero point one seven acres located at forty-six, zero nine Del Monte Avenue. It is R-one Single Family Residential Zone, Ward one, is Councilwoman Tarkanian. Staff recommends denial, the planning commission recommends approval. This is a public hearing, does anyone wish to be heard? Are you the applicant? Go ahead and introduce yourselves, if you would, please.
Yeah. Stan Polpak, Juvets Construction.
Utka Winograd, the resident at that property.
Very nice to have you both. Any comments, or you want to say anything yet?
I currently live in a four-bedroom home, but that, one of the bedrooms is the garage that was converted before I bought it. My laundry room goes between my kitchen and my dining room, and I also keep kosher, and my kitchen is tiny. I have storage racks, I don't even have enough cabinets for all my pots and pans and stuff. So I'm trying to expand the side of my house for utility room, and we're also expanding and doubling my kitchen size. And so I'm trying to get the variance to allow me to build that utility room so that I can get my, I don't have to walk through my laundry room to get to my dining room from the kitchen.
Okay, good for you. Thank you very much. Again, this is a public hearing. Does anyone wish to speak on this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and turn the time over to Mr. Perrigo.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Mr. Lowenstein will make the report.
Okay.
Mayor Protem, the proposed room addition is, consists of extending the home into the rear yard to accommodate a dual kitchen, as well as the expansion of the home and the required side yard setback for a proposed laundry room. Staff cannot support the expansion of the home into the required side yard setback, as the request is purely preferential in nature and is self-imposed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lowenstein. We'll turn the time over now to Councilwoman Tarkanian. Councilwoman?
Yes, I wanted to ask, planning, is there landscaping between, I didn't have a chance to go out and view this because of the holiday that we had. Is there, is there landscaping in between where this expansion would occur and the home next door? Or is this, where would this be? In the back? Your kitchen's in the back.
May I, may I comment on that?
So I, did you have a picture of the landscaping in the back?
Mayor Protem, through you, we do the best we can to get the pictures into the back, although we're not able to actually physically go back into the backyard. So, it, it looks like from this photo that I don't believe there is landscaping along that wall, but it's, it's sort of hard to tell. Again, we do the best we can from the street, but we're not allowed to just go in people's backyards when we go out and take the photos.
Councilwoman, there's a diagram up earlier that showed the expansion. If maybe we could get to that.
Yeah, it doesn't show.
Right there. There's the new addition.
Geez.
And is that the back of the house, ma'am?
Yes, we have a pool in the new addition, and on the side, it's basically the wall between my property and my neighbors, and there's rocks, and there's currently a shed there that will go down to make the new kitchen. But that's all that's there is rocks. You don't have any trees at all in that backyard? There is a tree way back over in the far corner. There's one tree. I wanted to get this addition done before I got somebody in to do landscaping. Basically, on the far side of the pool, over to that side of the pool, there is an area where grass would be planted. There's one tree there. There is nothing on this side of my property at all. Your neighbor that I'm concerned about isn't on the pool side. The neighbor I'm concerned about is on the wall side. And you don't, and you don't have any landscaping there? No. They don't have landscaping on their side of the wall either.
Did they approve of your expansion?
Yes, they did. They submitted a letter-
Okay.
-to the planning commission saying they approved. Oh, I didn't see that. All right. I'll take your word for that, that they sent that letter. That's the only concern that I had. He has a copy of the letter, if you'd like to see it. Oh, okay.
Why don't you give that to the clerks? We have it in our record, too, please.
Since that's the only home that it would affect, and if they have this letter that says that's fine with them, then I would move for approval.
All right.
I know how hard it is. I did that myself, trying to expand, and I kept within the, the city's, I had to cut off two feet, so I know it's hard.
Thank you, Councilwoman. There's a motion to approve Agenda item sixty-one. Please vote, and please post, and that motion passes. Congratulations, good luck.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Good luck.
We are now on Agenda item sixty-three. This is VAR six, six, eight, nine, seven. It is a public hearing. The applicant owner is Erica Acosta, for possible action on a request for variance to allow a five-foot side and rear yard setback, where ten feet is required for proposed accessory structure, Class II casita on a half acre, loaded at, located at seven, zero, five, five Del Ray Avenue. It is in Zone RE, Residence Estates, in Councilwoman Tarkanian's Ward one. Staff recommends denial, the planning commission recommends approval. This is a public hearing, which I declare open. Does anyone wish to be heard on this item? Seeing none, and the applicant's not present, I will close the public hearing. Mr. Perrigo or Mr. Lowenstein?
Mr. Lowenstein will make the report.
Mayor Protem, no evidence of a unique circumstance has been presented as the applicant has created self-imposed hardship by proposing accessory structure within the required side and rear yard setbacks, when the subject site can accommodate the proposed structure in compliance with code. As such, staff recommends denial of the request. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lowenstein. Close the public hearing. Councilwoman Tarkanian.
I received several contacts from neighbors in that area who were for this. I did not get any that were against it. I move for approval.
There's a motion to approve Agenda item sixty-three. Please vote, and please post. And that motion passes. Thank you very much. We are now on Agenda item sixty-four. This is VAR six, six, nine, six, four. It is a public hearing. Applicant owner, Wetton Trust, for possible action on a request for a variance to allow a five-foot side yard setback, where ten feet is required for proposed expansion of an existing accessory structure, Class II garage, on point five two acres at eighteen thirty Tierra Vista, Terra Vista Way. This is RE Residence Estates Zoned. This is in also Ward one, Councilwoman Tarkanian's Ward. Staff recommends denial, the planning commission recommends approval. This is a public hearing, which I declare open, and I see the applicant is present. Please, introduce yourselves.
Mayor Protem, glad to be here, and nice to see the city council. Gary Carlson, architect, sixty-four, forty Bristol Way, and Mr. Wetton is here as well.
Welcome, gentlemen. Do you have any comments before I close the public hearing?
Well, Mr. Wetton has been a good neighbor in this neighborhood since nineteen eighty-five, eighty-six, and has a nice structure there, mature landscaping. He does have a few additional cars he'd like to get out of the street, and we tried to make this addition look much like his home.
Okay, thank you. No one has anything to say on this? I'll close the public- I'll close the public hearing. Mr. Lowenstein?
Mayor Protem, in view of absence of any hardship imposed by the site's physical characteristics, it is concluded that the applicant's hardship is preferential, and staffs recommend denial.
Thank you, Mr. Lowenstein. I will turn the time over to Councilwoman Tarkanian.
I did go visit that area. It seems to me you're squeezing closely between your garage area and the other. But again, I went out, I talked with the neighbors that were there, and it seems fine with them. The only neighbor it would affect, I think, sight-wise, was the one in front to the side of you. And the other request I thought is maybe on those windows that are on your garage that will show on Oki, could you maybe put shutters on it so it looks like a house? And then I think that'll just more be attractive down the Oki way. So that would be my condition, that shutters are put on those outside windows. Well, poor Oki gets beat up all the time, so I'm just trying.
Do you approve that, agree with those conditions, that condition?
Yes, we are.
Okay. Wonderful.
So that's my motion to approve with shutters being put on the windows that are similar probably to the ones you have in the front there. Shutters be put on the windows of the back part of the addition, which is the garage.
Is that good enough, Mr. Lowenstein? That's the additional condition of approval, and there's a motion to approve. Mayor Protem? Councilman Beers?
You know, since this is going to be a facility for the storage of cars, maybe the council won't be open to mandating sun visors instead of curtains.
As you can see, he and I sometimes have a different approach here, but no, it would not, he would not have to have curtains instead of sun visors. But I do think, and I think you're aware of the situation on Oki and how it's been dug up a lot, and how a lot more, we're just trying to improve the view and the aesthetics of it. So if you're going to go closer to the edge, I just think it would be nicer if you had the shutters.
Actually, we're improving the gatehouse across the street for ten oaks here shortly, so that area will be somewhat improved.
One rule.
Good. That's what we're working on. So that was my motion. Did you get that okay?
Yep, got the motion. Clerks got the motion. Planting's got the motion. Let's vote on the motion, and let's post.
I did want to say that I thought that Councilwoman Beers should wear a balaire tie instead of the. Sorry.
Uh-oh.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck, guys.
Sure works, really.
He dressed himself this morning, so.
I think it's fine.
Okay. We are now on Agenda item 65. This is WVR 67370. It is a public hearing. Applicant owner Pre Rancho Jones LLC. For possible action on a request for a waiver to allow no streetlights along Leon Avenue on 17.08 acres at the northwest corner of Alexander Road and Leon Avenue. This is in Councilman Barlow's Ward 5. Staff recommends denial. The Planning Commission recommends approval. This is a public hearing, which I declare open. Mr. Celeste, introduce yourself again.
Good afternoon again, Mr. Mayor Protem, City Council members. Here once again on behalf of the applicant founders charter school. My address is 1980 Festival Plaza Drive. What we have before you is a site that's located along Leon and Alexander. At your October 5, 2016, hearing, this board approved a charter school along with some other related entitlement applications. At that hearing, there was discussion, pretty much, I believe led from, initiated by the residents, which then created some dialogue between Councilman Barlow and my colleague Jennifer Lazovich with respect to streetlights along Leon. I've pulled some of those minutes just from that meeting to refresh your memory, but essentially, Councilman Barlow said that he would grant the neighbor's wish for no streetlights along Leon Avenue. We were advised at that hearing that because our application did not make that specific request to waive streetlights along Leon, that we'd have to come back in with a separate application. So we are coming back in with that separate application. Planning Commission has recommended approval, and I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Celeste. Councilman Anthony?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I am on the Board of Directors for the Founders Academy, and I will be abstaining.
Councilman Beers?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I am treasurer of said Board of Directors, and I will be abstaining on this item as well.
Very good. This is a public hearing. Does anyone wish to be heard on this item? Seeing none, I close the public hearing, and Mr. Lowenstein?
Mayor Protem, city staff encourages the full installation of complete streets throughout the city. Staff does not support these requests and recommends denial.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lowenstein. I'll now turn the time over to Councilman Barlow.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. At the previous meeting, when I was speaking with the Founders Academy as well as Ms. Lazovich, I had mentioned that I would agree to the wishes of the residents in this area for no streetlights, but I did mention also on the record that I would forego the streetlights until future time where residents on the street or the street became developed and streetlights were implemented. And so, Mr. Pergo, Mr. Lowenstein, if you all recall, you were trying to help me with the appropriate verbiage to forego or obey that particular streetlight component in this development by way of a waiver until future notice. And I believe, Mr. Lowenstein, you may have mentioned on the record of a condition that you assisted me with previously, if I recall.
Through you, Mayor Protem. Mr. Anderson was also aware of this. Condition number six states that the installation of streetlights on Leon shall be deferred provided that exterior street lighting shall be stubbed out for later use. And it goes on further for just that situation, that in the future, if warranted, the streetlight improvements will be able to be placed.
By the applicant.
On Leon. Yes.
Okay. And so you are aware of that, correct?
Thank you, Mr. Councilman. Yes, we are aware of that condition.
Okay. And having said so, with that condition in place, I'll move for approval subject to all conditions.
All right. There's a motion to approve, Agenda item 65. Please vote.
And, Mr. Celeste, if you do know, have we posted?
Thank you. Let's post.
Okay. Mayor Protem, through you?
Motion passes. Please.
Okay. If you do know, when do you plan to break ground? When do they plan to break ground?
You know, I apologize, I do not know that answer, but I will certainly get with Ms. Lazovich and let your office know as soon as I find out.
Yeah, because I would like to do a ceremony to break ground.
Absolutely.
Because residents in the area would like to also be a part of it as well.
Absolutely. I will let your office know as soon as I know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, note for the record that Councilman Anthony and Councilman Beers both voted in the affirmative when they meant to abstain. Am I correct?
That's correct. I am abstaining on this vote.
Yes, Mayor Protem, my subconscious made me do it. I am abstaining on this vote.
Wonderful to see that corner built, finally see there's something built there. Believe me.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Celeste. That motion passes. We are now on Agenda items 66 and 67. This 66 is SUP 67136, on a request for a special use permit for proposed hotel residence. 67 is an SDR 67137, on a request for a site development plan review for proposed four-story, 140-unit hotel residence use with a waiver of perimeter landscape requirements on a portion of the north and south property lines on 1.90 acres. The applicant is of Avrio Properties Incorporated, and the owner is 824 South Decatur LLC at 824 South Decatur Boulevard. This is C2 General Commercial Zone. Planning Commission and staff recommend approval on both items. These are in Ward 1, Councilwoman Tarkanian, and are public hearings, which I now declare open. Is the applicant present? I see no applicant. This is a public hearing. Does anyone wish to speak on this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Mr. Lowenstein?
Mayor Protem, despite the requested waiver and exception, the proposed development is appropriate for the general commercial zone in the Las Vegas redevelopment area. The adjacent uses will not be adversely affected by the proposed hotel residence, and the site is adequately buffered from the multifamily residential to the west and the House of Worship to the south. Proposed landscaping will enhance Decatur Boulevard's streetfront, and measures have been taken to ensure that the building is aesthetically compatible with the development in the area. Therefore, staff recommends approval of the special use permit, site development review, and associated waivers. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lowenstein. Councilwoman Tarkanian?
I had several questions that I wanted to ask the developer of this hotel, and so I'm going to move to obey this for two weeks until that person can be present.
Mr. Scott, can we obey both items with the same motion?
You can, Mayor Protem.
So you want to obey items 66 and 67 to the?
I move to obey items 66 and 67. Do we have room on the next agenda?
February 1st.
February 1st to February 1st.
There's a motion. Thank you, Councilwoman. Motion to obey these items in February 1st. Please vote, and please post. And that motion passes. We are now on Agenda item 68. This is SUP 67447. It is a public hearing. Applicant Verizon Wireless Etall, owner Rock Springs Retail Investors LLC. For possible action on a request for a special use permit for a proposed 80-foot tall wireless communication facility, stealth-designed clock tower at the southwest corner of Lake Mead Boulevard and Rock Springs Drive. This is C1 Limited Commercial zoning. This is Councilwoman Tarkanian's Ward 1. Staff recommends denial. The Planning Commission recommends approval. This is a public hearing, which I declare open. Are you the applicant?
Yes.
Please introduce yourself.
My name is Nancy Smith, applicant for Verizon Wireless Etall at 2523 East La Costa Drive in Chandler, Arizona.
All right. Thank you for joining us today. This is a public hearing. Does anyone wish to be heard on this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Did you want to put any comments on the record?
I wanted to thank Councilwoman Tarkanian's office for helping us find a stealth design that would work for them in lieu of a Monopalm-type site.
This, oh, there we go. That actually looks great. So when you're out in Ward 6.
You know, I would just like to say, they worked, you worked very hard with us because there were lots of concerns about what was going to go there and exactly where, and you worked hard to get this model for us. I greatly appreciated it. I think it fits in that area well. And my understanding is it only takes away one parking space?
It takes away three.
Oh, it takes away three parking spaces?
Yes. And the landlord, and I did a review of his parking lot, and this particular area is where he requested because it very rarely has cars parked in it.
Right.
Though it's a very busy shopping center, that is the one area that doesn't seem to get used.
That's right. And probably part of where the landscaping is, we did go out and view that place, and we thought you might go in a little where the landscaping is, and that might not even take the full three.
Part of it does go into the landscaping, and then to try to minimize it, yet make it co-locatable so that you don't need additional towers to locate.
But you were right. The landlord was right. There wasn't, those parking spaces weren't full, whereas almost all the others were. So that was an accurate statement on his part. And the clock works, right?
Yes.
Good.
And it'll be on all faces of the tower.
I thought it wouldn't be terrible if we put a clock up, and it didn't really keep time, and everybody would be going by it. But anyway, I, did you want to say anything? Okay, then I'm going to move to approve with the plan that's been brought to us.
Wonderful. There's a motion to approve. Please vote, please post. Congratulations. That motion passes. Thanks for hanging out with us for today.
And you know, we did need a lot more power in that area.
Yeah. That's going to look good right there, Councilwoman. We're now on Agenda item 70. Please, to the clerk, set the date on any appeals filed or required by public hearings. Would instruct the clerk to do so. Let's see, appeals from City Planning Commission meetings and dangerous buildings and nuisance libations.
Thank you.
We are now on citizens' participation. Citizens' participation, this is, public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters within the jurisdiction of the city council. No subject may be acted upon by the city council unless that subject is on the agenda and is scheduled for action. If you wish to be heard, come to the podium and give your name for the record. The amount of discussion on any single subject, as well as the amount of time on any single speaker, it will be three minutes. This is your opportunity to address the city council. Does anyone wish to speak under the public comment section of the meeting? Ladies? Yes, no? Just here to hang out? Okay. Please introduce yourself.
Hello. My name's Leslie Rigney. I'm with the Universal Peace Federation, and as well as Catherine Duncan and others. And we just want to let you know that the third Wednesday of every month, we have a forum here in one of the training rooms from 11 till 1:00. So if any of you would like to drop in, we're glad to have you. We have different topics of concern for Las Vegas.
Well, okay. Thank you very much for joining us today.
You're welcome.
You bet. Okay. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none? We'll move on to Agenda item 72. This is council member recognition. Comments made by individual city council members during this portion of the agenda will not be acted upon by the city council unless that subject is on the agenda and scheduled for action. I think we'll start down there with Councilman Coffin today. Councilman? Councilman Barlow, I know you've got something going on. It's just your nature.
You know what's interesting? Without my executive assistant, I have no clue what I have going on. And she isn't here right now, so I'll have to take a pass today of all day.
Okay.
It just goes to show you, man, when you have good help.
We just instruct everyone to go to the website, see what's going on in Ward 5.
Right.
Okay?
So I'll pass today, but Happy New Year to everyone if I haven't gotten to you just yet.
Yes, so Councilman Beers suggests we obey the Ward 5 report.
To the next one.
Councilwoman Tarkanian, please.
Basically, we don't have any, we don't have any specific official occurrences in Ward 1, but I wanted to say some general comments for all of the wards, and that is, I want to push that park ambassador program for all the wards, and that's for residents who are 50 years or older to keep an eye on the park that they visit regularly, because we often don't know if damage is done or if there's a problem that needs to be solved, and thus we're told by people who use a park regularly. And park ambassadors greet visitors, and they report safety concerns and maintenance issues to the city. They are also volunteers occasionally for special events in the park. I need a number of park ambassadors right now at Wifter, Brer, Pioneer, and Rotary Parks. And I don't know if all of you have yours filled with ambassadors, but if you don't, all of you, if anybody's interested, please contact the Ward 1 council office at 702-229-6405. contact the Ward One council office at 702-229-6405. And then every six weeks, alternating, and I say this for the people who are watching on TV, alternating, we have what we call our access program, where each one of the council people discuss the latest happenings in their ward. I will be, begin airing a news segment on January 19th, and the program is usually uploaded to the city's YouTube channel the following week. So if you have an opportunity to tune in, I think you'll find the program a good way to stay informed about activities in my ward, and then after my ward, I believe, comes Ward Two, Mr. Beers. And, and then it goes right down the line. So another good way to stay informed about Ward One activities is to subscribe to our Ward One newsletter. Newsletter. It sounds as if subscribe means you pay, but you pay nothing. It comes to you free of charge. So if you would like to subscribe, please provide my office your email address by calling 702-229-65 or 05, 6505, or by emailing me at LTarkanian@lasvegasnevada.gov. And then lastly, the city of Las Vegas is often looking for residents to serve on the city's boards and commissions. And I would like to take this moment to encourage you to visit the city's website at www.lasvegasnevada.gov. The website provides descriptions of each of the boards, information about when and how often they meet, as well as available openings. All you need to do is complete an interest form that is available online if you wish to serve on one of these boards. We all say you can't do this alone. We have to do it together, and this is the way residents can help get done things that they want done in the parks, in the streets, and other places. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you, Councilwoman. I think Councilman Barlow, we're not going to obey that item?
Oh, no.
Because I went too long?
No, you did good.
We're not going to obey.
Wait, just a minute. Mr. Mayor Protem.
Yes, Councilman Coffin.
You're abusing the left side of the panel today. And I registered this protest with the mayor when she returns. The whole idea that we don't speak about something today doesn't mean we have nothing on our minds. We have a great deal on our minds. We just don't want to share it with our constituents because we're a little afraid of what they think.
Thank you, Councilman Coffin.
Watch that one.
That's what we get for having a short council meeting today. And Mayor Protem, great job today running the meeting.
Thank you, Councilman.
Good job. In Ward Five, on Saturday, January 9th, I'm sorry, it's Saturday, January 21st, from 9:00 to 11:30, Dula's Gym, Gym Second Annual Aerobathon will be taking place. So join in a two-hour workout, which will include Zumba and MixFit routines. Pre-registration is recommended. So please contact the Dula Gym at 229-6307, or go on to our city's website at lasvegasparksandrec.com for more information. On Sunday, January 22nd, the Mob Museum will host a free community safety forum. This is DUI and distracted driving awareness event. This event is free and open to the public, so free admission to the Mob Museum following the event as well. So if you have not had an opportunity to attend the 19th most popular museum in the country, this is your opportunity to do so on January 22nd, and of course, you may contact them at 229-2734. Thursday, January 26th, Clean the Closets, the Las Vegas Senior Center. Bring your friends and come and shop to your heart is content at their indoor Clean the Closet sale. Find hidden treasures, unique gifts, and fun items you've been looking for. For more information, please call 229-6454. On Wednesday, February 1st, West Las Vegas Art Center Sculpture Public Outreach Meeting. You are invited to the public outreach meeting to review proposals for an exterior sculpture for the West Las Vegas Art Center in the gallery space in the center located at 947 West Lake Mead Boulevard. The public is encouraged to hear the presentation from three artist finalists and speak or comment on the proposed artwork. And of course, you may contact them as well at 229-5431. February 2nd, Coffee with the Councilmen at Starbucks located at 1925 North Martin Luther King Boulevard. So please come on out. I'm right at the corner of Martin Luther King and Mount Moriah. Coffee with the Councilmen. And of course, the historic West Side School. We're constantly promoting it because we're looking for those who are looking for space, office space, or a possible café, to come in at this location, which is located right at the corner of D. in Washington. A multimillion-dollar renovation and upgrade has been concluded, and office space is available. So please call Julie Quisenberry at 229-6551 if you're looking for space. And of course, you may continue to follow myself and the Ward Five team on all of my social media platforms, or just go old-school and call my office, 229-5443. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Appreciate that. Councilman Beers, you ready?
Yeah, I am. Fifty, sixty thousand people visiting Las Vegas today for the world of concrete, so I thought I'd take my time and just kind of sit here monolithically. No, no, actually, we do have a, a new year on us, and with that, our monthly opportunities to meet with constituents. The first will be our monthly Beers with Beers event. This will be Thursday, January 19th at Three Angry Wives in Boca Park. Hope to see you there. If the suds are a little strong for you, why try some espresso? We'll be having coffee with the Councilmen at Desert Wind Coffee Roasters. They're located at Sahara and Buffalo. And in addition to make your coffee, they're a second location in Ward Two that actually roasts beans, although technically, this is a few feet into Councilwoman Tarkanian's district, technically. And you're, by the way, invited, ma'am, if you'd like to come join us. The business kiosk's still in place up at the Sahara West Library. This is a remote device that allows you to access many of the services that you would have to come down either to the Development Services Center or to City Hall in order to transact your business with the city. This is located up at the Sahara West Library. Call us if you don't know where that is, 229-6405. And it was on this day in music history, 73 years ago today, that the first jazz concert was held at the Metropolitan Opera House in New York City. You can't quite tell in the picture, but that is what they call an all-star lineup, especially with the benefit of, of looking back in time like this. Included there are Louis Armstrong, Benny Goodman, Lionel Hampton, Artie Shaw, Roy Eldridge, and because I was a trombone player at Cashman &amp; Clark, Jack Teagarden. And that's all we got. Mayor Protem, thank you very much.
Thank you. I still think you need some music in the background when you're doing your music things. I just think that would be a nice addition. Councilman, did you want to add something?
I just wanted to ask, did you know, were you aware of the man who wrote that song Ain't Misbehaving? Do you remember that song?
Yeah, I do, but I don't know who wrote it.
I can't remember his name. Do you, Brian? Do you?
I don't.
It begins with an R. Anyway, I just wanted to tell you, the lady I honored this morning, that was her husband, and it just shows you if you can write songs well, which he did in 1915.
Richard, Richard Maltby.
What?
Murray Horwitz and Richard Maltby. Oh, no, I'm sorry, that's the musical, not the song.
That wasn't it. But all I wanted to say was if you are musical, and if you can write, keep at it, because those, you get annuities from that every single year. And it's wonderful that those people, the way back in the 1920s and so forth, are still getting royalties for Ain't Misbehaving and My Girl and all that sort of stuff. Just added.
Okay, awesome. Thank you. Thank you very much. And before Mr. Anderson walks out of here, I want to thank staff for their work today. Thank you, Mr. Anderson, for all they're putting up with us today. I also want to wish our communications director, David Rigman, a birth, happy birthday. Today's David's birthday. I meant to do it this morning. So happy birthday, David. And we'll go into my brief announcements and get this knocked out. I was visited not too long ago by the Girl Scouts. We came in, talked about the Tulley Springs National Monument. She's holding the wooly, the, that is a Colombian wooly mammoth tooth cast, and of course, my commemorative centennial rifle that sits in my office. So they came down, want to let everyone know, Girl Scouts are pre-selling Girl Scout cookies. They're $5 a box.
(inaudible).
So if you want your Girl Scout cookies, the deliveries start February 13th. Moving on, out to Floyd Lamb Park at Tulley Springs. On February 18th, it is sweets and treats. The 5K and 1-mile fun walk. Join me and my wife Kelly. We will be out there with our vicious dogs. I'm just kidding, they're Yorkies. So you can pre-register. This is a great opportunity to, to sign up at the Centennial Hills Active Adult Center and come on out. First 50 registrants, plus receive a free t-shirt. So come on out and join us for some exercise. Why often get off, we often, as council members, get asked this, when is your next shredding event? I just want to share with everyone calling my office that our next shredding will, event will be Saturday, April 8th, from 10:00 to 2:00 at the Centennial Hills Community Center located on North Buffalo. You know where it is, so start saving up. All that identification stuff you don't want found in the trash by bad people. Our continued partnership with Nevada Child Seekers, we do have a missing young lady. Her name is Shantiqua Schuman. She's 16 years old, 5'11", 160 pounds. She is African-American, has a scar on her left ankle. Shantiqua was last seen in the area of Pecos and Owens. She's also six months pregnant and may be with a Caucasian male. She may be carrying a backpack with personal belongings. If you have any information about the whereabouts of this young lady, let's get her back to where she can get taken care of and contact Las Vegas Patrol Police Department, 702-828-3111, or you can always contact Nevada Child Seekers directly. They do a great job, 702-458-7009. So if you need to contact the Ward Six City Council Office, you can easily do that by emailing me, councilman-s@lasvegasnevada.gov. I'm on Twitter, Facebook, and you can do the old-fashioned way. Pick up the phone and call my office, 702-229-6154. That is it, and a wrap. And I adjourn this meeting of the city council. Oh, I got to do this, because you're going to take it away from me. Never let me do it again.